And just a friendly reminder to the audience, if we can please mute all devices. Thank you.
This is the call to order for the August 28th, 2025, meeting of the Santa Clara County Planning Commission. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Hutterly.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Belzka.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donohue.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Rouser.
Present.
And Chairperson Escobar.
Here.
Thank you, UF Corp.
Thank you. Please stand if you are able to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. Oh, boy, we have a full house tonight. Bear with us. My name is Amy Escobar, and I am the Chair of the Santa Clara County Planning Commission. On behalf of the Commission, welcome to today's meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute all electronic devices, including cell phones that may interrupt the meeting. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment. This item is reserved for persons who wish to address the Commission on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda. And I'm going to pause for a second, so if any of you are here for agenda items and you wish to speak, there are cards down in front. You'll need to fill one out and put it back there so that you can line up to speak later. The law does not permit Commission action or extended discussion of any item not on the agenda except under special circumstances. Members of the public who wish to address the Commission on a non-agendized item should request to speak at this time by giving a request to speak form to the deputy clerk if you're in chambers, or by using the raise hand icon if attending virtually. Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We do have one speaker for this item.
Okay.
In chambers and no speakers on Zoom.
Okay.
Would you like to do three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, Sharon Luna, if you want to make your way to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
It's ready. Okay. Good evening, Chairperson Escobar and fellow commissioners. My name is Sharon Luna, and I'm coming to you tonight on behalf of the San Martin Neighborhood Association in a personal for myself. A few months ago, we came to you, or you heard, a resident from San Martin express complete anguish in regard to the mental health residential facility that was in their cul-de-sac. We, I wanted to give you a follow-up because for three years, we've been hearing that it is not the county's responsibility. So what we did was we went to Senator Corktase's office because we needed some assistance. And right now, what is happening is that there is work being done to help these residents in regard to what they're having to go through. No one should have to deal with somebody jumping in their backyard, frightening their elderly parent. No one should have to have sheriffs and ambulances on a court. This is all on a court. So we're making some headway in regard to possibly getting some legislation done that these, we need the mental health residential facilities, but San Martin currently has six in a small radius, and we feel that that is not acceptable. Also, I wanted to let you know, because I brought this to your attention, in regard to a business that was having, signed a compliance agreement, and that compliance agreement was in San Martin, on San Martin Avenue. And I guess you could call it movement, they dumped some dirt, I guess, ready to plant, what they committed to do four years ago. But I would like to ask that you do follow up on that because you did make a commitment to look into it. And so it's important that follow-ups are handled and that we're not left with wondering what is happening. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar and changes to the Commission, Commission agenda, excuse me. Are there any questions, changes, discussion, edits on the minutes from Commissioners? Any changes to the agenda? No. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Will you please call roll for vote?
Commissioner Hutterly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Belzka?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donohue?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Rouser?
I approve.
Chairperson Escobar?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is number five.
Pardon the interruption, and no public comments for that item.
Oh, that's right, sorry. I'm just steamrolling along, you know. Next up is item number five, receive report related to San Martin Planning Advisory Committee relating to items on the August 28th, 2025 Planning Commission agenda.
And we do have Vice Chairperson Luna here in attendance, if you want to make your way to the podium.
Not used to this, talking, well, three times in a row. Good evening, Commissioners. Given your busy agenda, I'll keep my remarks brief. I have had the pleasure of attending approximately four SIMPAC readouts, and I'm here to provide you with the summary of our July meeting. While there were no major developments, I'm representing the new chair, Liz Paradas Bahanson, the new chair of the San Martin Planning Advisory Committee, and I serve as co-chair. We had initiated a pilot project to review applications before they are deemed complete. During this pilot, we will hear from applicants about their projects, provide our input, and then not revisit the project until the night before the Planning Commission meeting. It is important to note that this pilot does not replace the community's right to an early notification process that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2013. Despite initial resistance from the Planning Department and some members of SIMPAC, it led to a split vote, and what we did was, the public comment was not provided, so we had to go back and ask for public, it opened the hearing again. And what we did was, we took another vote, and it was unanimous that we do try to do the pilot, which we're looking forward to it. We did hear to the Brown Act, and the Planning Department gave us the green light with that. We also reviewed the long-awaited updates to the rule zoning amendments, which you will hear tonight. These amendments are significant for those running small farm businesses, and our wineries, and other things that you're going to be talking about tonight. We were also introduced to the new code enforcement manager, and that was exciting, and his commitment to the San Martin Committee. We discussed our work plan. work plan, but however, some of the issues that were, things that we wanted to put on the work plan were not in our scope as of yet. There was also two letters that we received regarding Builders Remedy Project, and we had no reports that were submitted, other than the one that Planning did, and no future agenda items were provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing to consider an appeal of the June 26, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete a concurrent land use application for the Gavello Glen Housing Development Project, consisting of a major subdivision and grading approval for 173 housing units, one, broken down to 135 single-family homes and 38 duet homes, and related amenities on three existing parcels, totaling approximately 49.7 acres. The applicant or appellant representative is Paul Lattala from the Lattala Group, property owners Gale A. Gavello trustee et al., Northern Trust Company trustee et al. Property address is 20200 and 20202, Harry Road in San Jose, APN numbers 701-32-008, 701-32-009, and 701-32-014. Zoning is A-20AC and A-20AC-SR. It is located in Supervisory District 5, and is file number PLN 25-026-SB330-APL1, and is ID number 125721. Does staff have a presentation?
Thank you, Chair Escobar. Lisa McHale, Deputy Director. We have with us today Senior Planner Charu Alawalia, who's going to provide a presentation, and accompanied by Principal Planner Samuel Gutierrez, and we have online, I believe, as well, County Counsel Christina Stella, on, to assist the staff. Just want to introduce an important note on this item. It's an appeal specifically of a determination of incompleteness that was issued on June 26, 2025, and that is the sole item before the Planning Commission this evening. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Charu Alawalia, Senior Planner. The item before you, as presented earlier, is an appeal of the June 26, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete a concurrent land use application for the Gavello Glen Housing Development Project. This is consisting of a major subdivision and grading approval for 173 housing units and related amenities. So the project site, which is highlighted in yellow on the slide, is located in unincorporated county, adjacent to the city of San Jose, city limit, and urban service area. The subject parcels are zoned exclusive agriculture with a lot-size combining district of 20 acres and general plan designation of open space reserve. Surrounding uses include Arroyo Caralos stream to the north, a private school in Alameda's Creek to the south, this RV storage and open space to the east, and the Harry Road Almeden Expressway and single-family residential development to the west of the site. Three parcels, approximately 49.7 acres in size, make up the project site. The proposed housing development is for 173 housing units. This is for 135 single-family homes and 38 duet homes, and related amenities include wastewater treatment systems, stormwater retention basins, parks, and riparian open spaces. So before staff presents the analysis of the appeal, it is important to understand the key milestone dates associated with this application. On November 19, 2024, the applicant, Mr. Lattala, submitted a preliminary application for the Gavello Glen Housing Development Project pursuant to the Housing Crisis Act SB 330. Under the Housing Crisis Act, a seminal of a complete preliminary application vests the applicant's ability to submit a formal application within 180 days. On November 12, 2025, the applicant submitted a formal application for the Gavello Glen Housing Development Project. The county initially determined that the Gavello Glen Project was incomplete and issued the first incomplete letter on March 13, 2025. The applicant resubmitted the application on May 29, 2025. Thereafter, the county determined that the application was incomplete because it was still missing the items related to official plan lines or OPLs. The county issued a second incomplete letter on June 26, 2025. Thereafter, on July 10, 2025, the applicant appealed incomplete determination. The first incomplete letter, which is dated March 13, 2025, identified 38 incomplete items, including 14 items from the Roads and Airports Department. Among the incomplete items, several related to the applicant's failure to show the OPLs. This letter was also, in this letter, it was also notified that failure to submit the incomplete items within 90 days would result in the preliminary application expiring and having no force or effect pursuant to the Government Code Section 65941.1E2. The second incomplete letter, dated June 26, 2025, identified two incomplete items. The first item was to show the existing limits of the Almeden Expressway extension for the McKean Road OPL, and the second item was to show all existing and proposed improvements on the plans that may intercept or be immediately proximate to or within the Almeden Expressway Extension McKean Road OPL area. Both of these items were previously identified in the first item that was incomplete letter. So the appeal in front of the Planning Commission today relates to the June 26, 2025 incompleteness determination. Moving to the grounds of the appeal, the appellant identified two main grounds for the appeal. As for the first ground of the appeal, the applicant stated that providing, provided, sorry, the applicant states they provided the updated official plan line in the Sheet C2 as a part of their appeal submission on July 10, 2025, and that in their previous submission, the applicant did not understand the OPL information to be required due to state density bonus law application. The department acknowledges receipt of the updated Sheet C2 with the applicant's appeal submission on July 10, 2025, which shows the existing limits of the Almeden Expressway OPL and the proposed improvements. However, today, the question for the Planning Commission is whether to uphold the county's determination that the application was incomplete at the time the incomplete letter was issued on June 26, 2025. So as noted on this slide, the applicant's May 29, 2025 submittal was incomplete because it was missing the two items related to the OPLs, and therefore, the county correctly determined on June 2026, 2025, that the application was incomplete. The updated Sheet C2 showing the existing limits of the OPL and the proposed improvements was only submitted to the county on July 10, 2025. As for the second ground of the appeal, the applicant states that the county improperly determined, A, that the applicant had only one 90-day period to complete the SB 330 application, and B, the preliminary application expired. In response, staff would like to share that the county did state in the second incomplete letter that pursuant to Government Code Section 65941.1E2, preliminary applications PLN 24119PRE and PLN 24230PRE have now expired and have no force and effect. However, that statement is not an incomplete item, and it is not in the scope of the Planning Commission's review today. Pursuant to county's zoning ordinance section 520ADC, the only question before the Planning Commission is whether the application, as resubmitted on May 29, 2025, was complete as of June 26, 2025. So before moving to staff recommendation, I'd like to note here that the total number of comments received on this item as of this evening are 367, and all of these comments have been included in the record. So to conclude with staff recommendation, I'd like to share, staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the Department of Planning and Development's determination that is the land use application for the Gavello Glen Housing Development Project is incomplete. We have representatives here from Planning and Roads and Airports to answer any further questions, and this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
And through the chair, just one additional note to supplement Ms. Alawalia's presentation, a reminder that we're not discussing the merits of the project, so we're not looking at consistency with general plan or anything like that. It's specifically just whether or not the application was complete or incomplete as of the June 26, 2025 item. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear for members of the public as well, that we're not, we're not being asked to look at the merits tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioners who have questions of staff at this time? Okay. No? No? Do you want to wait until, okay, all right. You as well? Okay. Okay, so... The applicant is here, correct? Yes, okay.
Correct.
Okay, so let's go ahead and bring them forward for their...
All right. Mr. Polaletta? And I believe you also have Jenna Yorcan with you? Thank you. And we do have a presentation. It'll take one moment to pop up on the screen.
Sorry, let me back up. I am opening the public hearing. Now they may speak.
Thank you very much.
I apologize. I told you I was extremely tired.
And we'll set the timer for 10 minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Paul Lattala, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here to respectfully appeal the Planning Department's determination on this Builders Remedy application. As I'm about to point out, the record is clear. This application was complete as of June 26, 2025, and should proceed under state housing law. Next slide. Just quick background on the project before we get to the appeal issues. The site is approximately 48 acres, designed for 173 homes, at a modest density of 3.6 units per acre. Importantly, 35 of these homes, 20% of the project, are reserved for lower-income households, fully meeting affordability requirements. The plan at this point includes community amenities like linear parks, pocket parks, and open space buffers, while maintaining riparian setbacks, and importantly, the property is within San Jose's sphere of influence and urban growth boundary, meaning this project is consistent with long-term planning goals and will be developed at some point. Next slide. When we received the first incomplete letter, we responded comprehensively to all 38 comments. That included the issue of the official plan line for the Almeden Expressway extension. The county asked us to dedicate land to this decades-old roadway, which would have reduced housing units. Instead, we properly invoked the SB 330 density bonus waiver, which state law provides precisely for cases where local requirements reduce residential density. Next slide. To confirm, sorry, wanted to highlight to the Commission that between Letters 1 and 2, the request from county significantly changed. When we first submitted the application and got our first letter, we had a comment that said that to show the official plan line and that a curverlinear dedication to public right-of-way must be shown. In a call with three senior staff members from Roads and Airports, including Mr. Tomesh, we argued, why build a road to nowhere that is never going to get built beyond this project? It doesn't make sense to sacrifice housing units. Doesn't make sense to sacrifice a linear park for the area to build a road for which the concept behind is obsolete. During that call, staff explicitly told me that even though the Almeden Expressway extension may never be built, the OPL was still officially on the books, and therefore, I would still have to dedicate the land for it, which means a complete redesign of the subdivision that we had submitted to accommodate the road. Then, in the second incomplete letter, the county changed its position, as you can see in comment number one, or they essentially repeated the same comment, but they deleted the line that says, "A curverlinear dedication of public right-of-way must be shown." Instead, it just says, "Show us what this OPL looks like." A materially completely different request. This is purely informational, whereas before it was, "Give us the road, change your design to accommodate it." This shift strongly suggests that staff had accepted my SB 330 waiver as valid, yet instead of acknowledging that, they faulted me for not anticipating their change in position. Every step of the way, I sought the clarification of staff on what they were looking for and responded accordingly. It is inappropriate for staff to retroactively change the scope of required information and then claim that my response to the original ask was inadequate. Next slide. Just to give you a little bit of background on the OPL itself that we're talking about, even though we're not discussing approval or disapproval of whether this gets incorporated into the project, the OPL is obsolete. It dates back to the 1960s, when Almeden and Coyote Valleys were slated for major growth. The plan calls for the four-lane extension of Almeden Expressway, starting at this property and going all the way to Bailey Avenue. Today, these areas are largely preserved as open space and greenbelt. There is no realistic chance this expressway, as intended, will ever be built. Even the county, so we didn't know about this OPL when we first submitted. We couldn't find it in any, the civil engineers, surveyors, they could not find it in any of their records or maps or general plans for the county or city of San Jose. That's why it could never be contemplated beforehand. Upon learning in it, after receiving our first incomplete letter, we reached out to the county to give us the details of this OPL, and it even took the county three weeks to put it together for us to then take and contemplate incorporating it into the project. Next slide. After the second incomplete letter, I sought clarification on these shifting requirements. On July 2, 2025, I received a letter from Deputy Director Lisa McHale, which stated very clearly that my 29th submittal included a request for a density bonus and waiver, and that those requests would be evaluated during post-completeness processing. This was the first time the county had communicated that the outcome of the density bonus waiver related to the OPL dedication would be addressed only after the application was deemed complete. Up until that point, this procedural sequencing had not been conveyed in any written or verbal communication. However, this acknowledgement aligns with state housing law and confirms that the OPL issue is not a valid basis to withhold a completeness determination. In our May 29 resubmittal, all comments from incomplete letter number one had been addressed. The only remaining items were the two OPL-related comments, which had been completely addressed with the density bonus waiver request. Therefore, by staff's own admission, the OPL waiver issue should not have prevented completeness status, meaning there was no lawful basis to withhold a completeness determination after our May 29 resubmittal. Next slide. This isn't just about this project. Across California, courts are siding with applicants in builder remedy cases. I just wanted to highlight some of the recent headlines of cases being settled, both in our area and outside our area. Most recently, Contra Costa sided with a developer against the city of Danville for not quite the same exact issue, but pretty close to this. As far as the further legalities, I'll let my colleague Jenna take over, since she is the expert.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Yorcan. I'm a partner with the law firm Holland and Knight. We represent the applicant. The sole issue in front of you this evening is a narrow procedural one. Was the applicant's May 29 submission to the county complete for the purposes of the Permit Streamlining Act? In other words, did the submission include all the information that the county can appropriately require under the law? And once that information was submitted, did the county have all the information it needed to continue processing the application? We strongly believe the answer to both questions is yes. If the Commission has not granted its appeal, the county will be at substantial risk of litigation from the applicant, housing advocacy groups, and potentially the state of California. litigation from the applicant, housing advocacy groups, and potentially the state of California. I'm not going to repeat Paul's remarks too much, but I think it's important to highlight two specific points. First, the materials submitted on February 12 and May 29 together represented a complete application. They provided all the information that's appropriate and legal for the county to require, and that the county needed to evaluate the applicant's proposal. On the OPL, this was like a long-ago-contemplated Almaden Expressway extension, as Paul explained and as explained in more detail in our April, in our August 26 letter, that would be illegal for the county to continue to oppose a dedication or avoidance requirement for that area because it never came to fruition. There's no rational or legitimate basis to require a dedication. The only immediate purpose that dedication would serve is to reduce the density of the project, which would violate the law. The applicant did not show the OPL in the plans that it submitted on the 29th because applying the requirements related to the OPL would violate the law, so he instead addressed this request by documenting the illegality and explaining that he was requesting a state density bonus law waiver. Second, while we understand the commission is only specifically addressing the question of technical completeness, we do think it's important to touch on the vesting issue as well. A Superior Court case in LA and the HCD have unequivocally decided on this issue. A few weeks ago, HCD issued an NOV to the city of Cupertino, taking the exact position the county staff has. And as you may have seen yesterday, HCD sent the county a letter on this very issue. We respectfully request the commission consider all of this when making a determination this evening. Please grant the appeal. Thank you for your time. Is it possible to have one or so more minute?
I'll give you one more minute.
Okay. So just to highlight, a few weeks ago, HCD issued a NOV to Cupertino, which took the same exact position that county staff has taken for this project. We hope you saw that yesterday, HCD issued a similar letter to the county, reminding the county that any failure to reverse its position on this topic may result in the state bringing litigation against the county. The applicant is also ready to bring litigation to protect its project, and we are hopeful that housing advocacy groups such as the Housing Action Coalition or NIMBY may join us to help ensure the future of this much-needed housing project and others like it. And so for those reasons, we request that you take that into consideration and grant the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Remember, only as it relates to the incomplete letters and the completeness of the application. Okay. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Bowska.
Thank you. So I do need to disclose that I did have ex parte communication with the applicant. That consisted of an email that the applicant sent to me, which I have forwarded to staff for the official record. That letter was substantially similar to the letter submitted by the applicant's lawyer that everybody received, so there's no additional information there. So with that said, I just, I have a clarifying question, and this may be for the applicant or for staff. Did the application that was resubmitted after the first incomplete letter specifically show the existing limits of the Almaden Expressway extension and show all existing and proposed improvements on the improvement plans that may intercept or be immediately, in immediate proximity to or be within Almaden Way extension? Were those two items actually included in the, and sorry, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but in the resubmittal?
No, Commissioner, those items were not included because instead of, the way it reads is show all lines of what you are dedicating, which we were not dedicating that land. Instead, we claimed the SB 330 Density Bonus Waiver, so we did not show those lines. Because in the first ask, it was redesign the project. If staff had asked us simply just to show the lines on top of the current site plan, as they did in our clarifying call between my counsel and city council after the second incomplete letter, it was an easy ask. It took my civil engineer a couple hours to do. We would have gladly put it on and had it accompany the Density Bonus Waiver.
Okay, thank you. And then a question to staff. Were those two specific items requested in the original incomplete letter?
I'll defer to our Roads and Airport staff. We have Tom Esch here, but my understanding is that the staff did request pursuant to the checklist delineation of the OPL, Official Plan Line.
In the same language, and sorry, I did read the first incomplete letter. I just don't have the entire thing memorized. So just to clarify, that same language, same requests?
The request in the second letter was actually less being requested of the applicant than in the original letter. And so the staff was not asking for the dedication in the second letter, is my understanding. I'll defer again to Roads and Airports for further clarification, but instead delineation of it. But let me defer to staff to respond to that.
Again, on the first letter, on the first initial review, it did have a comment about dedication. It then came to our awareness that that is actually an approvability issue, not a completeness issue. The second, on the second response, that's why, again, it still asked for the official plan line, but there was no reference to the dedication on the second time, again, because the letter was addressing completeness issues.
Did the first letter request the lines to be shown on the map?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is Christina Stella. If I may also just add, so the language of the first letter was to show the existing limits of the Almaden Expressway Extension OPL, and the second letter used nearly identical language, show the existing limits of the Almaden Expressway McKean Road OPL. So the same request was in both letters.
Vice Chair Rousher.
I also had ex parte communications. It was basically a brief overview of what is now Item K, the attorney's letter. The information is all contained in that, which is now on the public record. I do have a question on the OPL. When we say it's hard to find, who eventually provided, who eventually came up with that? And kind of what was the date on when that was actually provided? Is that, it sounds like county, but is that Roads and Airports? Is that the Planning Department? Is that...
No, Commissioner, we got it from the county clerk. So we originally requested it, I think, both of the planner and of Roads and Airports, but don't hold me to that statement. Eventually, they directed us to the county clerk, and after our request, it took three weeks to get the information back.
And approximately when did you get, receive that information?
Early, middle April, I believe.
Okay. And staff concurs with that timeline?
That is correct. It was prior to the resubmittal on May 29, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. I don't have a question right now, but I did want to disclose that I had correspondence via phone call and email with the applicant, Mr. Latala.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will let members of the public speak. Clerk?
Yes, we currently have 16 speakers in chambers. Let me just verify. And it looks like we have about four speakers on Zoom for a total of 20.
Okay. If there's anybody else that wishes to speak that is in chambers, please come up and grab a card, fill it out, so we can queue everybody. Again, anybody online watching this hybrid, you'll need to raise your hand for the item, and then you will be called upon when it is your turn. So with that, we'll give one minute per speaker. If you'll go ahead, please.
Perfect. And a note for the public, the public comment queue will close for in-person and Zoom when speakers begin speaking. Our first few speakers, I'll call five at a time, Mark Pilarzic, Todd Nims, Ryan Meneski, Gino Barello, and Chris Barello. If you can make your way in form aligned, please go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mark Pilarzic. Governor Newsom, as part of the Housing Crisis Act, implemented policy to further enhance the creation of housing throughout California. This immediate action allowed the market to start processing applications, and in the focal point tonight of Santa Clara County, this resulted in approximately 35 applications being submitted through the county process. These 35 applications could directly create approximately 6,800 residential units, of which approximately 880 of those would be restricted to affordable housing requirements. In short, the governor's policy to create additional housing in the largest housing crisis seen to date is working. However, city, county, state agencies, and others continue to delay the process, which is why the housing crisis exists today. We are here tonight due to the county indicating... Ouch. The applicant made the submittals within the timeframe. The precedent in response to the unlimited, but not limited to a single round, we're concerned that with the Planning Commission denying this appeal, creating unnecessary legal fees that will be paid by the taxpayers of Santa Clara County. Thank you.
Chairperson Escobar and the rest of the commission, thanks. My name's Todd Elms. I've been living out in Almaden for 34 years, since 1991, and we could spend a long time talking about whether or not this project should go forward or not, but what I'm learning is that this is about the application process. And I've heard a couple things here that I thought was interesting. They apparently didn't comply a couple times. People looked into that and denied. And I think what sounds true to me is that there's a lot of reasons why they apparently didn't comply, except for now they're up here threatening everybody with lawsuits, comparisons to other communities and all that, and I kind of find that a bit offensive. And so I would say, if they can't comply with what they're supposed to do in the right timeframe, and when asked multiple times, I don't take that as a serious application. And for them to come up and then suggest to you that you need to give them an extension, another extension, is a bit, a bit with a threat or under duress, seems to me a bit strong. So, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Gino Barello, and I'm a resident, speaking in strong support of the Gavello-Glen Housing Project. Tonight is about whether this county will follow state housing law or continue a pattern of delay that fuels our crisis. California law requires that you give the fullest possible weight to approving housing under the Housing Accountability Act. That's not rhetoric. It's a binding directive. This timeline here is straightforward. Don't need to go through those. Yesterday, the State Department of Housing and Community Development issued a formal notice of potential violation to the county. HCD's letter says the county's failure to reset the 90-day response period after each incompleteness letter violates the Permit Streamlining Act. This is a builder's remedy project, like it or not. Protected by the HAA, wrongfully declaring that its vesting expired is itself a violation. The state has also put the county on notice about that enforcement. Courts can order approval, award attorney fees, and impose fines, $10,000 per unit, up to $50,000 per unit. This is where leadership matters. NIMBY politics and bureaucratic games have priced teachers, seniors, and first-time buyers for years. Delay is denial. Choose homes over hurdles. People over process and compliance with state law. Thank you.
I just want to remind speakers that when the buzzer does go off, that your time is up. You can finish whatever sentence you're in till we have a complete thought, but to be respectful of everybody here that wishes to speak, we need to hold the time. Thank you very much.
And before we begin, I'm going to go in and call the next five speakers, Jeff Gordon, Steve Wilkinson, Alice Kaufman, Keith Lubener, Joe Consol. Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. My name is Chris Barello. I think the Gavello-Glen team deserves accommodation for their persistence in delivering much-needed housing. Like our project that we're developing, this project is a vital step towards meeting Santa Clara County's housing goals under state law. Latala Holmes submitted a preliminary application on November 19, 2024, followed by a full development application on February 12, 2025, well within the six-month vesting period. The county issued an incomplete determination on March 13, and the applicant resubmitted materials on March 29. However, the county's June 26, 2025 determination not only deemed the application incomplete again, but also wrongly declared the preliminary application expired without resetting the 90-day correction period required by the Permit Streamlining Act. The county's own staff report on page 3 of 7 clearly states, each time the applicant res submits their application, the county has 30 days to evaluate the application for completeness under the Permit Streamlining Act. If the application is still incomplete, the county must again specify in writing that items are not addressed and provide specific information on how to address the incomplete items, even if the applicant had not fully addressed each incomplete item, which I believe he has. Per the process outlined... You said I could finish my sentence. Per the process outlined by staff, the county should have issued another incomplete notice within a 90-day period to respond. So, thank you.
Hello. My name is Keith Alblender from San Jose. I'd like to urge the commission to deny the appeal. I think we're talking about loopholes in loopholes, and really, the whole builder's remedy is a loophole, and I think it's sort of a domino. If we let things slip by, everything slips by, and then we have no rules. I'd also like to, you know, echo the comment there. I feel everybody in support of the project has made threats, and I find that very offensive as well. And to the point about not knowing about the Almaden Extension, I know people who live on that road, and it's public information they were told when they bought the house. There's easements, so it's really not hidden. Anyway, thank you, and thank you to my neighbors who are here. Thanks to the commission. I yield.
Thank you, commissioners, for listening to me. My name is Steve Wilkinson. I've been a resident in Almaden Valley for 45 years, and I've had the pleasure of hiking Quicksilver Park. So my concern, and I ask that you deny the appeal, is primarily fire safety. I hike Quicksilver Park, and it is a tinderbox, and I just dread the moment a fire starts there. I also have a very good friend who owns a ranch in this area, and are at close proximity to this development, and she's unable to find affordable fire insurance. So she goes without fire insurance on her ranch. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Joe Consol. I'm a longtime Almaden resident. I urge the commission to reject the appeal by the developers for the following reasons. They missed the deadline for filing a complete plan under Santa Clara County's SB 330 process, even after twice receiving detailed feedback about the incompleteness of their application. The county Planning Department recommends that the appeal be denied, voting in favor of the appeal would set a bad precedent for SB 330 projects in Santa Clara County. Your task tonight is simply to decide whether the plan for the Harry Road project is complete and was completed on time. The record shows that it was not. Therefore, I respectfully ask the commission to reject the appeal by the developer. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Chair Escobar and commissioners. My name is Alice Kaufman. I'm Policy and Advocacy Director with Green foothills. I wanted to respond to some comments that were made in support of this project, talking about the need for housing and accusing the county of having motivation, improper motivations and NIMBY motivations and so on, and referencing the other builder's remedy projects, of which you have about 30 in front of you right now. And I just want to make the comment that these projects that are in the unincorporated rural county area are not the type of housing that was intended to be supported by the builder's remedy, which specifically states that if there's no water or wastewater facilities to serve the project, that's a reason to deny the project. And that's not an issue that's in front of you right now. We're not reaching the question of whether there's adequate water or wastewater. But if we're talking about policy, if we're talking about state policy to encourage housing, the state policy for housing is to encourage infill housing in cities where we have services, not sprawl development on open space. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind holding applause till the end so we can give everybody the respect of their time to speak, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
And before our next speaker--
And you are able to do wavy hands instead. Just don't put them together, please, okay?
And if I can call five more speakers. Beverly, Eileen Hunt, Terry Pavlock, Roque Garcia, and Brian Druggs. Please make your way. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for volunteering to serve. I'm Jeff Gordon with Orchard Creek Neighbors Association. It seems to me that the county did follow the procedure. They played by the rules. There's misunderstandings. But in essence, it seems to me that the applicant is asking the Commissioners to interpret law. And I think, personally, I think that's not your proper role. I think interpreting the law should be left up to courts. And it's more important you just determine if the county did anything wrong or if they followed the rules and the procedures and the deadlines prescribed. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Beverly. I also live about half a mile from the area that's being proposed. And I do take walks out there and see all the natural animals, birds, et cetera. And I believe that that's an open space and should stay open to the animals. Oh gee, I'm nervous. And people. Anyway, what I'm trying to get at also is it is a fire hazard area and very concerning. And there is this beautiful little public, not public school, but private school right next to the area that they want to put all these houses. And I don't think it's fair for those kids to have to go through two or three years of this building while they're trying to learn something really good. Anyway, my time's up. I was going to say more, but I'm not going to. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Hunt. My husband and I are longtime residents of Almeden Valley. Please deny this appeal. A missed deadline is a missed deadline. A missed deadline. And I also agree with the others who are asking you to deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Terry Pavlovich, and I live a few blocks away from the proposed site. I'd like to ask you to deny this appeal because the deadline has been missed, and not one but two letters were sent to the applicant about the additional information needed. Also, I'd like to point out, the water pressure in this area is extremely bad. We've had the water company out multiple times. They can't get it up to standard. They basically told us there's nothing they can do. So, I worry about additional houses and what that will do with the water pressure in the area. Additionally, there's wildlife. We've got coyotes, we've got wild pigs, we've got raccoons, skunks, bobcats in this area. And additional houses is going to displace all of that wildlife very likely into the homes in the neighboring area, including some of these new ones. In fact, my house has hosted many of these animals over the years. So, I'd like once again urge you to deny the appeal based upon that information. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rocky Garcia. I'm with Glen Rock Builders. We've been home builders in the Santa Clara Valley for over 50 years. I took over from my dad, who started building homes here in 1952. What I would like to discuss with you is a real parallel with Mr. Latala. His dad was also a builder. Doesn't say that we don't make mistakes. We all make mistakes. In this case, I don't think he did. I'd like to also bring up to you a situation that we just are dealing with right now, and it's called Santa Teresa Expressway. Santa Teresa Expressway went down to Morgan Hill. We had property that we bought down there and held it for over 30 years. Santa Teresa Expressway. When the city wanted to take it over with the county, they changed it to an arterial. What does that do? An arterial is significantly smaller than an expressway. But they did something after 30-plus years. Thank you.
Hi, Brian Dragus. So, it's my understanding from my county supervisor, one reason that we're all here is the county was late in doing the builder's remedy. They have to plan for how many units they can grow and have. And the county was late, and therefore builder's remedy kicked in. It was just, they're late, kicked in. So, now we have a situation. They're late. It should kick in. It should be the same. If you're late, you're late. The county was late. That's why we have builder's remedy. They were late. Deny the appeal. Thanks.
And then moving to our Zoom speakers. Our first speaker is Dashil Leeds. Dashil, you'll have one minute. You are muted. Dashil? Please proceed. I do see that your mic is live, but we are not hearing you in chambers. Just one moment while we troubleshoot.
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
Awesome. Great. Hello, my name is Dashil Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the CR Club Lumber Pre-Headed Chapter. We respectfully ask that the Planning Commission deny the appeal of the June 26 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete the land use application for the Gavello Glen project. There's a reason why laws often mandate strict deadlines for clarity, certainty, and avoidance of the appearance of giving special consideration to particular projects. Granting an exception to this mandatory deadline could set a precedent that could encourage other applicants to expect the Planning Commission to grant them similar unwarranted exceptions. As was identified earlier, the site has been identified as valuable habitat for threatened and endangered species on the Bay Area green print map. It's not only located in an important wildlife corridor, but also in multiple hazardous condition zones. But the concerns with the site are numerous, but they're not material to the decision being made today. The matter is clear. The application was incomplete, and the procedural grounds are sufficient to deny the appeal in accordance with state law and in line with the staff recommended.
Our next speaker is Lori Osugi. Lori, you'll have one minute. Please proceed.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you very much for hearing us. My husband and I have lived in the Almeden area for over 20 years, and we strongly urge you to deny the developer's appeal. As previous staters have said, the developers failed to submit the required information by the requisite deadline, even after two letters by the county. And therefore, the application was deemed incomplete. We feel that the project should not proceed under the builder's remedy law. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Sue. You will have one minute. You are unmuted.
Hi. I'm a 30-year resident very close to the site, and I wanted to speak because I'd like to ask you to please deny the appeal. The developer had multiple chances, and they missed the deadline. As others have said, if you let this go forward, it'll set a bad precedent for the other builder's remedy projects in Santa Clara. You can't play favorites. A deadline is a deadline. And also, as others pointed out, this is in a high-fire-hazard severity zone, which could cause issues with fire insurance. It's also not just some vacant lot. It's valuable habitat to threatened and endangered species. It's an open space, and it's a wildlife corridor near water sources. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Wentwater. Brian, you'll have one minute.
Hi.
Hello, we can hear you.
I'm Brian Winter. I'm the Land Use Attorney for Mountain Winery and numerous other land use developers, housing developers in the county. We agree with the appeal and every legal point made by the appellant. A few quick points. The 90-day rule that's at issue here applies only to housing developers that have chosen to file a preliminary application under SB 330. It does not apply to any other applicant, and applicants may elect not to file a preliminary application. The law is intended to give early vested rights, provide application streamlining, and facilitate new housing. In order, never mind the legal issues that are on the table, the legal language of the statute. In order to believe that the provisions that staff have taken are correct here, you would have to conclude that the legislature intended to treat applicants choosing to use a law intended to help their projects meant that they should be treated worse than applicants that chose not to use that law.
Thank you. And then just a note for the public. We do have two speakers that raised their hand after the start of the queue, so we can give them the option, if you would like, through the chair.
Yes, let's go ahead.
All right.
But that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
And iPhone, you will have one minute to speak. Please go ahead. iPhone, you've been asked to unmute. We can move on to our next speaker. Clarence, you will have one minute to speak. Your mic is unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Hi, Commissioner. Thanks for listening to this. I understand we're dealing with technicality around whether or not this applicant submitted something correctly or not. I'm not here to discuss that. I'm here to provide additional context. I'm a three-year resident of Almeden, and in order for me to live in this neighborhood, I had to be the top 10% of my high school. I had to go to a top-five university in the world. I had to have a startup exit, and I had to work 20 years in Silicon Valley to afford to live in Almeden Valley. So, contrary to some of the folks here, I want to make the next generation a little bit better off. And so, if the plan is reasonable, I think it's worth it to build the housing to fill our schools and to keep the community vibrant. Thank you.
And we'll try iPhone one more time. iPhone, can you unmute? And it appears they're having technical difficulties. That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Does staff have any additional comments? Okay, done. Does the applicant have any additional comments they'd like to make at this time?
I think there's a lot of misconception here coming out of the public comment that we were late with some sort of a submittal. I just want to reiterate, we were late with no submittals. We submitted every application on time. There's just a misreading of the law that staff is doing in saying that we somehow missed a deadline. The state has commented that staff is wrong. We've made every deadline along the way. I just want to reconfirm that I confirmed with what staff was asking for every step of the way. We did nothing willy-nilly. What they asked for, they got with each submittal. I can't help that when we got responses, they contradicted themselves. Staff even contradicts themselves in their own staff report. In one section, they're describing to you the law and how the law works for resubmittals on page three of the staff report, saying that every time someone submits, they have 30 days to look at it, and they have to provide us with direction as to what they're looking for, and we have 90 days to reply. That occurred. It even says so in the report. But then right under that, they say that, oh, well, we're saying that you're expired because you didn't provide everything we asked for. Couple of the speakers said that it's pretty distasteful that we're here and lawsuits are being threatened. I don't disagree with them. This is the first time in my career that I've shown up to a public hearing with a lawyer in tow to speak on my behalf. This is the first time at a public hearing where I'm not on the same side of the table as staff in agreement as to pushing whoever's the voting body is to approve the project. I live in this county. I live in unincorporated Santa Clara County. It pains me to the thought that I'm going to be in a lawsuit with the county that I live in. It's not me. But staff, as the state has sent a letter to yesterday, is clearly breaking the law. And so, there's been significant money that's been invested in this, and so it is what it is. It is, I have to do what I have to do, as much as I don't like the idea. You know, I met with staff before all of this, and I offered to them. Builder's remedy is here. You may not like these projects, but the state has told you you have responsibility to build 3,100 homes in what is now the next six years. The common professional opinion is they're not going to get it done in time via their housing element. So, all that's going to happen is a year and four months from now, the state's going to come knocking on your door, asking, how's your progress? The progress is not going to be there. The state's going to decertify the element. Builder remedy will be back open, and you'll get even more builder's remedy applications. It's going to just make a messy situation even messier. To the public here in opposition to the project, I get it. I typically do public outreach, answer questions, clear up misconceptions and different hyperinflated conspiracies about what is and what isn't there. But we're not there yet. This application is just beginning to be in processes. We still have to get through the EIR. Once we get through the EIR, we'll determine if a project is even possible here. We'll determine what can and can't be done, what the mitigations are. And as the project takes shape, I will then reach out to the public. I am local, I am reasonable, and I'm approachable, and I'm willing to talk, listen, and discuss what this project will and won't be. I'm going to save the rest of my time for Jenna, because I think Jenna has some more comments.
Just one brief clarification. So, Commissioners Belska and Rouse, are you asked about whether the limits of the OPL were requested to be shown in both letters? I mean, you received some clarification on that. Ultimately, we don't dispute that the information was requested. Rather, Mr. Latala has highlighted the confusion that was caused by staff in between the letters. And ultimately, we dispute whether requesting the information about an OPL that is illegal to apply is appropriately a completeness item under the Permit Streamlining Act. The Permit Streamlining Act limits the ability of jurisdictions to ask for information. They're limited to requesting information that is actually required to evaluate an application. So, they can't, a checklist can't ask for everything under the set. The applicant provided that information. In its second application, it was abundantly clear that the OPL cannot legally be applied and that the applicant was alternatively and additionally requesting a state density bonus waiver from that dedication and avoidance requirement. We feel this meets the standard of both the state density bonus law and the Permit Streamlining Act, and the Commission must grant the appeal accordingly. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I ask that we have a show of hands for the people in the room that are opposed to this and want them to deny--
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we please not do that? Please, please, please don't do that. Thank you.
I thought we could.
We heard under public comment, so that was the time to express whether it was yes or no in your support. Thank you. At this time, are there any additional questions? Actually, no. My apologies. I'm going to close the public hearing, and then my Commissioners may ask questions as part of our discussion. So, with that, I am closing the public hearing. Commissioners. Commissioner Levy.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for coming out here and expressing your perspective. I think they were all very interesting comments and much appreciated. I had two conversations outside of the meeting. One was with Alice Kaufman from Green foothills, where we discussed items that are in her letter, and we also reviewed the list of upcoming builder remedy projects. Also, a comment with Jean Dresden, and that was really in a different, we had a different meeting. And she just said a letter was being sent, nothing beyond that. meeting, and she just said a letter was being sent, nothing beyond that. I also did do a site visit and looked, and visited the site in advance of the meeting. A question for staff. There was a letter from the Water District that said the application was incomplete for a number of reasons. How does that play into this? I didn't see any comments or within staff letters concerning that letter from the Water District, which they, which I think was sent in twice, indicating that the application was incomplete.
Yes, through the chair, the items that were provided by the Valley Water, the Water District's comments are not considered by the county as incomplete comments?
Yeah, actually, I think it was city, but that's right. I misspoke, it wasn't the district, but go ahead.
Right. So the, the Valley Water comments received, which are also a part of the public comment packet, this is attachment D of the items packet. They're not considered by the county as incomplete items. These were provided as courtesy to the applicant because we received them from Valley Water, and we transferred these over to the applicant.
Okay, great. And so the things that we should be basing this on is what is in that checklist?
That is correct.
And the items that are specifically identified within the checklist.
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Can I provide a comment to that question as well?
Unfortunately, not right now. The public hearing has closed. If there is a direct question to you, we will ask that, and we'll call you back up. Thank you. Vice Chair Rouser, followed by Commissioner O'Donoghue.
I also want to say thank you for everyone that gave comments. We value your feedback. You were very civil, and we appreciate that. It's not always the case, and it's nice to have a respectful exchange of ideas. So I just want to say thank you. Just a couple of comments. The, the builder's remedy, when I first heard about it, I thought it was kind of a good idea because the state has put out requirements, and counties and cities need to follow them rather than putting off much-needed housing. However, this last go-around, in my opinion, the state kind of moved the goalposts, and so they made it much more difficult for the county. And there was, if I understand correctly, three different cycles of information exchange back and forth, and they kept asking for more and more. And so now my, even though builder's remedy, I was sort of appreciative of it, now it is getting to be something that I don't, it's, it's a square peg in a round hole, i- in my opinion. However, it is the law right now. And so I, I sympathize with those who, who don't like it, but ultimately, we, we do have to follow the law. Those are just general comments. My specific comment on this particular item is the county has 30 days to respond. And so if you take your 90 days and you back it up, the applicant has to basically give their submittal within day 60 in order to get any kind of feedback before the 90 days expires, right? Because the county can take up to 30 days. And so anything from day 61 on, the county will respond in 30 days, but that closes the 90-day window. Am I seeing that correctly?
Through the chair, again, we're not, the Planning Commission isn't being asked to look at the 90-day or deliberate on that particularly. However, the county's position, as, as noted in the staff report, is that an application is submitted, the county has 30 days to respond to that. Anytime an application is resubmitted, the county gets that 30 days. And that, under our interpretation, that there's, after the first incomplete letter, the applicant has 90 days to achieve a complete application.
Okay, so I'll just run my scenario through. If, if the applicant doesn't submit stuff by day 60, then they will not get any feedback on that submission from day 61 through 90. Now, according to testimony, there was about three weeks where people were trying to find, the, the county was trying to find what is the OPL. Well, that's 21 days. So out of the 90 days, we have taken 29 days and say, you're not going to get any feedback there. We've also delayed it by 21 days. And so the amount of time that we're looking at is ridiculously low. And so I know we're not discussing the timeline, but it sounds to me like the applicant did put a good faith effort in trying to comply in every step of the way here. And with, with the way the timeline is working out, I'm not sure. Well, let me just say, I, I think based on the evidence today, that I would vote that the application was complete. I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Rouser, I can address your question. This is Christina Stella, Deputy County Counsel. So just to be clear, an applicant, after an applicant submits their application or resubmittal, the county has 30 days to review and determine whether the application is complete or incomplete. The applicant then has 90 days from that date to submit their application. So the county's review period does not eat into the applicant's 90-day review, oh, sorry, 90-day resubmittal period. The 90 days starts after the county's 30-day review.
So there was a single 90-day period, or did it get reset after the first submittal? The first, the incomplete letter, I'm sorry.
So when the applicant, so the applicant submitted their application, the county had 30 days to review. The county determined that the first submittal was incomplete. The applicant then had 90 days to resubmit a complete application. And then at the, after they submitted, the county then had another 30 days to review, and that's when the county determined that the second submittal was also incomplete. And just to be clear, the, I think there was a few kind of misstatements in the record. So the county's position is not that an applicant cannot submit again after those 90 days. The applicant is taking issue with the county's position that their failure to complete their application in those 90 days has led to their preliminary application expiring. If that were not at issue, the applicant would have just resubmitted, and the county would continue to review the application. It would just not be under the protections of SB 330. So I just wanted to clarify that as well.
But the second incomplete notice, was that beyond the 90 days? The second incomplete letter?
I'm not sure if the department wants to clarify the dates. As far as I understand, the applicant took 90 days from the county's first incompleteness determination to resubmit, and then the county issued its determination on the second submittal 30 days later.
Which changed the ask in the second one?
It didn't actually. It used both the first and second letters, used the same language.
I.
Both asking that to show the existing limits of the Almeden Expressway Extension OPL.
Okay, I, I will disagree on that. That's the extent of my comments. Thanks.
Okay, I have two questions. The first question, is there a limit on the number of times an applicant can resubmit a formal application for SB 330 after, after receiving an incomplete letter?
So in this particular case, the applicant submitted one application for the project. They submitted that on February 12, 2025, and we've been processing that particular application. There are not more than one application submitted for this project. Not specifically answering your question, if an applicant, are you asking again within the vesting period?
Sorry, let me clarify. So let's say I'm an applicant on, I submit my formal application, you give me an incomplete letter, I resubmit it, you give me a second incomplete letter. How many times can this go back and forth?
It can go back and forth unlimited. However, again, the vesting component is a separate consideration. But just like any application under planning, an applicant submits an application, we post a checklist online of what's required. An applicant submits an application, we review that project to see if they've met the requirements of the checklist that's posted online. County, every time they resubmit for that project, we get 30 days. And that can continue to go on until they whittle down that incomplete, that incomplete list to the point where it's a complete application. So that can continue to happen for this project. It's just a separate consideration of the 90-day rule.
Okay. And then the second part of my question is, you know, say I disagree with an incomplete letter or an item on the incomplete letter, I can appeal it. And if that appeal is not, if I don't win that appeal, does the application then die? Or if I'm still within a period, can I change my mind and make the changes and resubmit?
The project does not die just based on appealing an application for completeness or incompleteness. It does, they do not lose the ability to continue to process an application, generally speaking. So regular planning application that comes through, just like these, you can continue to process the application, and we would intend to do so here.
Okay, and then the difference here would be the vesting. Is that right?
Correct. That's a separate item. That's not, that's a legal consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Belska, followed by Commissioner Cohen, followed by Commissioner Levy.
Thank you. I, I want to get clarification from staff here. So the zoning ordinance says that anyone dissatisfied with a decision can submit an appeal. And so I question why we are being told to ignore half of the applicant's appeal. I think they were well within their right to appeal the expiration decision, and they did so. And therefore, it is our obligation to consider that.
Elizabeth Visser's, Lead Deputy County Counsel. So the zoning ordinance sets forth specifically the determinations that are subject to appeal, and an incompleteness determination is one of the items specifically subject to appeal to the Planning Commission. The county's interpretation of state law is not something for which in the zoning ordinance, there's a provision to appeal the county's legal interpretation of state law, nor are the planning commissioners, you know, essentially attorneys who are issuing legal opinions about interpretation of state law, if you're talking about the 90-day rule.
I am. So Chapter 5 dot 30, appeals. Appeals may be filed by anyone dissatisfied with a discretionary land use decision. There's no list here limiting what decision can be appealed.
So legal interpretation of state law is not a discretionary decision?
So I would also argue that this commission has considered legal interpretations in the past, specifically Takings Law. So I don't see why this particular legal interpretation would not be in scope for the Planning Commission.
So I'll look up the exact provision that you're citing, but essentially, there's two portions of the zoning ordinance, right? There's saying who could make an appeal, and then there's the portions of the zoning ordinance that specify what is appealable and who is the appeal authority. And so the thing that you're citing about, you know, anyone could file an appeal, it could be, it doesn't have to be just the applicant, for example, it could be a neighbor or another interested party. But they can only file appeals for the items that are specified in the zoning ordinance as appealable, right? It's not the case that, you know, the planning department makes various decisions every day, and it's not the case that any person who is unhappy with any decision that the planning department makes any day along the way could kind of devise their own appeal procedure and say, I'm appealing this provision, this decision, under the provision of the zoning ordinance you state. There are kind of very clear procedures spelled out in the zoning ordinance for the process, and then at one point, a department, for example, has made a final decision, and which decisions are appealable.
I respectfully disagree. I, I scanned through the zoning ordinance left and right, trying to find anything that would say that this decision is not appealable, and I couldn't find anything.
And there is nothing in the zoning ordinance that states that the county council's legal interpretations are appealable to the Planning Commission?
Okay, thank you.
I have a clarifying question of you, Commissioner Belska. So you're concerned that they're not able to appeal when in fact we are here for an appeal? So what is the crux of that?
My concern, my concern is that we are being told to ignore half of their appeal. We are, we are being, they appealed the expiration decision.
But you're, you're, what you're citing is that you can or you can't appeal, not that we are directed to not look at certain elements as part of this. Those are two different things. So I'm confused as to what you're really getting at, but you're saying it's the things that we are asked not to look at. However, you're talking about who can file an appeal, which is a separate issue.
I'm saying that I believe they had a right to appeal the expiration decision, and therefore we have an obligation to consider that as part of this hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Cohen, was it you or was it Commissioner Henley? I'm sorry, it's hard to tell from this far.
Thank you so much. Just two questions. The applicant mentioned a letter from HCD, and I was wondering if that was in our packet or if there was just a summary of what that content was as it relates to this discussion. And then the second question I have is, a few times in the last few minutes, we've heard the phrase, "good faith effort." And I just would like to understand, as commissioners, do we have the opportunity to consider good faith effort, or is it just the strict legal interpretation of the staff's direction? Thank you.
Through the chair for the initial question, yes, the letter from HCD was provided to the Planning Commission and is also available online. High-level interpretation, again, I don't, I don't want to interpret HCD's comments, but their, their position is seemingly that every time an applicant submits an application, the 90-day starts again. And so again, I'll, I'll defer ultimately to county council if they wish to opine any further. And for your second question, I would defer to county council as well. And we have Christina online.
Yes, Christina Stella, Deputy County Counsel. So HCD's letter, as Lisa said, takes the position that the county's legal interpretation is incorrect, and that an applicant has multiple chances to complete their application without their preliminary application losing vesting, which is contrary to the county's interpretation.
Is it possible to point in the record where that HCD letter is? Because I'm not familiar.
Through the chair, we can look that up.
Yeah, I'm currently looking right now.
Would it be possible for staff to pull it up, and we can put it up?
Yeah, if you give me a moment, I'll see if I can have someone in the back.
Let's move on while they do that. So go ahead and continue on.
I also want to make a disclosure. I attended a meeting of environmental groups. I attended a meeting of environmental groups where we, a monthly, regular monthly meeting where we check in with each other and updates, and this project came up, and there was a brief general discussion about the project and the, how it came to be on appeal. I did not participate in that conversation, but I was present for it. I also had a telephone conversation with Alice Hoffman from Green Foothills today about letting me know that they were submitting this letter that you see on your table. I also want to add my thanks to everybody who turned out. It's really, it's always exciting to see a full, full room here, and obviously, there's strong feelings about this project, so I appreciate you coming out and making yourselves heard. It's clear to me that we're not deciding tonight about the merits of the project itself or the merits of the builder's remedy, or even the legal question of when the 90 days starts and whether it's told by anything else, so it seems clear to me. The question is, when, when was their application complete? And my understanding of what was presented in the packet is that it was, as far as the county was concerned, they thought it was complete as of June 26th, June 26th, I think, with the second, when the second incomplete letter went out the door. Can someone on staff tell us what the precise date of your interpretation of the 90-day expiration is?
If we can have just one moment, we'll look.
Yeah, Lisa's making copies of that comment for everyone on the dais. She'll be back in one moment.
Let me back up really quick. Commissioner Cohen, you were still waiting for an answer on good faith, correct?
Yes, if there was something for the staff to respond to.
Okay. I'm not sure if that's a county council question, or, because it sounds like it's subject to interpretation as too black and white or emotional as part of good faith effort, which is how I unfortunately take that phrase of good faith effort, is an emotional place, which doesn't necessarily belong in land use, but I will defer.
Elizabeth Visser's, Lead Deputy County Counsel. The Planning Commission may determine whether they believe that the, the application was complete or incomplete, and there are not kind of specific factors laid out in the ordinance code for what to consider, but I would say that the, obviously, besides, you know, what did they submit, what was being asked and required in the checklist, and did it meet that? How you interpret, you know, what, what was being asked and required, and whether it met that, maybe leave some room for your interpretation.
I have a question of staff while everybody is reading regarding the comment, the consistent comment of incomplete is the OPL. At any time, did the applicant acknowledge that, or just say, "We don't agree that we couldn't find it, therefore time ran out," or was it, "We disagreed that that should even occur because it'll never get used, the road," this sort of thing? I'm curious where that falls, because I'm not hearing an acknowledgement from an applicant that, correct, it's not on there, it's rather, "We didn't know it existed, but then we told you twice it exists." So then what? What happened after that? Did you just continue to maintain that it doesn't exist? Yeah, you can go ahead and answer, and then staff can chime in, because to have a disagreement as, "You don't want to do something because it may not be used," is, is really not enough. It's, it, you would have to take that issue up separately to, to work that out, but unfortunately, the time is the time. So I'm just curious, was it, "Yes, we acknowledge, yes, we're going to work on it," or, "We acknowledge, but we don't agree, and that's it, so then the time ran out?"
No.
Okay.
After being informed of it, after the first incomplete letter, we acknowledged it existed. Instead of providing it, the dedication, we argued the SB 330 density bonus waiver. That's not saying we're not going to give the county. The SB 330 density bonus waiver needs to be determined by county whether they're going to accept it or not. And per Lisa's letter that she sent me on July 2nd, after the second incomplete letter, it was that that determination on the OPL and the SB 330 will be determined post-application completeness. That's why we're saying, if that's the only two items remaining in the second incomplete letter, then the county had everything else they needed to deem the application complete, and then, post-completeness, we discuss, negotiate, and decide what to do with the OPL and the SB 330 density bonus waiver.
I'm trying to frame my question to you. How is it possible to determine that later whether it's actually happening or not when staff has said, "We need to see it at least reflected in the application to make it complete"? Now, whether that happens or doesn't is part of the process later on. So, it, yes, it can be discussed later on, I don't want to say negotiated, discussed, but initially, it still needs to show to make the application complete. Is that correct? I mean, I think I'm trying to, I'm trying to get there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, so easements, roadways, OPLs, so official plan lines, those are requirements on our checklist. The county has the ability to establish a checklist for its projects, and we have a checklist for these particular applications, for SB 330. I do just want to point to, just a note for clarification. I heard through Tom Esch here from Roads and Airports, there were discussions earlier on, and around, around even March 14th. So, again, the application was submitted February 12th, and around March 14th, around that time of that first initial incomplete letter, there were discussions happening around the OPL. I don't want to speak for the applicant. I believe that there are some positions of whether or not they, you know, feel that they should provide that information, and whether or not the future outcome of the roadway is relevant.
I mean, it's, it's to be discussed. As soon as staff clarified the comment of asking just to show it on the existing site plan, we provided it promptly, and, and now it is there for the county to determine what they want to do or not do with it, and what ultimately ends up happening.
So, when it was provided, it was past the expiration or part of the appeal?
When, when they provided the information, it was with the submittal of the appeal, on July 10th, I believe, yes.
So, not part of the proper process?
It was not, it did not come with the May resubmittal of the application.
So, not part of the proper process? It needed to be, okay. So, had it, had it been there, and regardless of the outcome of five years from now, if the road is built or not, separate discussion, we'd have taken it up later on, but it needed to be there in that particular moment to create the completeness regardless of who agreed or disagreed? That's a later discussion as it proceeded through the process, correct?
That's correct. Had the applicant submitted the official plan line and met those requirements with the May resubmittal, then those items would not be in question.
And we would have just discussed it later as part of the project?
Correct.
Whether it was built or not?
Okay, correct.
All right. Commissioner Levy, you are next, and then I believe it goes Vice Chair Rousier, and then back to Commissioner Balska.
All right, great, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the clarification on the conversations that took place in March, because one of my confusions was, why weren't you talking back and forth, understanding that this one item was missing? And so, I think that, you know, there may be formal letters submitted and everything else, but there could also be conversations, informal conversations that identify, well, have I, have I missed anything yet? So I think it's incumbent on, you know, the applicant in some respects to make sure that they do get the checkboxes marked off. And the way I understand this is that staff, council, HCD have a different perspective when it comes to that 90 days, and I don't think that's on our, our preview to look at that. That's a legal issue that I don't think we're going to weigh in on, and you may, you may have a different perspective, but I, I don't believe it's one of the items that we should weigh in on. And if I, if council, you know, county council works with HCD and makes the decision that, "Okay, maybe we do have to open it up for 90 days so we don't get sued," then, then, then the process will continue, is that correct?
I'm going to defer to county council on this, Christina Stella, but I don't believe HCD is the deciding body here.
No, I know.
For that.
Yeah.
I'll defer though, real quick to county council.
It does go to court and.
That's right.
Then, but the, then the process will continue as it should.
Depending on the, on the position of that, that decision.
Yes, depending on the position of that decision. So, it really is a legal issue that is outside of our jurisdiction. And so, the one issue on the table is, did they get a complete application in within the 90-day period? Based on what I've seen here is that they did not, because the OPL was clearly identified with the checklist, if you guys, everybody looked at the checklist. It was within the letters, and they had the information in April, before they submitted their paperwork in May. So, it was not added on, it was not included on there, and so I don't think they did make the deadline. And so, I'm, I'm pretty certain that, you know, that they did fail to meet the deadline. I'll make a motion to such that we deny the appeal that the application was incomplete.
And just a point of clarification through the chair, Commissioner Levy, the Planning Commission is being asked to determine whether or not the application was appropriately deemed incomplete or complete on that, on that June 26th date.
Yes, that's, that's what my motion, that is what my motion is. It is that when, when the 90-day period was completed, that the application was incomplete.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, the Planning Commission is not deciding the status of the application at the 90-day deadline. The Planning Commission is deciding when the department decided in its June letter that the application was incomplete. Was that correct or not? In other words.
Exactly.
On that date, was it complete or incomplete?
Okay. I think, I, yes. So, thank you for the clarification, but I think the basis of the motion stands, so.
A second. An apologies, was that a second from Hedley or Balska? Hedley, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to clarify the motion, because it's still a little ambiguous for me, and I'm not ready to vote just yet, or to continue discussing. If you could clarify based on.
I will, I will read, I will read it.
Just read the language from the.
I will read it, yes.
From the agenda, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes. All right. To write, I am making a motion that the Department of Planning and Development has to deem the, deem incomplete concurrent land use application for the Galvello Glen Housing Development Project consisting of major subdivision and grading approval for 173 housing units, 135 single-family homes, and 38 duet homes and related amenities on the three-acre parcel totaling 190, or totaling 94.7 acres.
Through the chair, on the June 26th, 2025.
Appeal of the June 20, yes, on the June 26th decision by the planning department.
And does the second agree to the clarifying language? Yes, okay.
Yes, we're basically just moving the staff recommendation.
Yes.
Correct.
We're approving staff recommendation.
It would be D, I'm sorry, 6D in the, in the agenda, is that, it's deny the appeal and uphold the, that's, that's what he's speaking to, yeah?
Yes.
And you do agree? Okay. So, is there discussion on the motion on the floor? Go back to Vice Chair Rousier, and then Commissioner Balska.
Just for the record, D does not state on the date, so.
I'm aware of that, I'm just trying to correspond it to the agenda, which is probably what everybody else is looking at.
If people refer to that, they wouldn't get the full motion.
That's what I said, on the agenda, corresponding to that, not what's actual, the full staff report in that thing. Just, if you're looking at just the straight plain agenda, without the packet, without the details, it is D, 6D. It's the D.
Okay. I asked a question earlier, this HUD letter, when, do we find out when that was sent to us?
At the conclusion of the meeting, I will go ahead and double-check. There's a lot of comments to go through, and I couldn't clarify at the moment.
I, I believe it was received by the county yesterday and posted very shortly after that, yesterday.
Thank you.
Okay. Because we never saw it, and my name's on it. And I'm pretty sure I looked through everything. So, I think, I think that's kind of significant, and I don't want to point fingers or anything, but, and I know staff thinks this is on an issue that we're not dealing with, but having this kind of letter and the force behind HCD giving opinion on this, I, I think is significant, so I will be voting against the motion.
Through, through the chair, just a point of clarification. I believe I see an email to the Planning Commission yesterday around 2:54 with this item, but I do want to just make sure that I'm clarifying through the clerk that that.
Has anybody up here seen this letter before, it was handed to us just now?
No.
Okay, so I'll.
And again, there was several items added to the agenda for comment, so I need to go through and verify which one it is, and I couldn't tell you right now on the spot. Thank you.
I'm not saying it was intentional.
No worries, thank you.
Yes. May I?
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Okay. I, I agree with Commissioner Rousier. I would also vote no on the motion as it stands. I was going to float a motion idea of my own, which may also not fly, but since, since you made this motion, I would like to propose a friendly, or perhaps not so friendly, appeal or amendment to, to say, deny the appeal of the incomplete, however, require that the county allow the applicant to resubmit the application by September 24th, 2025, without jeopardizing their vesting.
The Planning Commission does not have authority to take that action.
Okay.
Any further discussion of the motion on the floor? Okay. I'm going to support the motion simply because I feel that they were given ample opportunity to put, put what was asked, just to make it complete, and the discussion could have come later whether or not that were to occur, and it seems to be the crux that the applicant doesn't, doesn't agree that the road should exist, so therefore they, they didn't put it, they didn't submit it. And then when they did, it became too late, it became this, a lot of this ambiguity, and so, understanding that the conversation about whether or not the road will be required could have come later, it should have been on the application for consideration later, and it wasn't. And two times to receive the same remark of incompleteness, it's no mistake, it is very clear to me, and this is a very black and white issue, and it is unfortunate that you lose the status. But that is the risk you take when you apply under this, and it was not meant to be a standard. It was because the, the plan was not complete, and the state opened up this window for individuals. Now, I'm more than happy to support proper projects that are complete, that did apply under, you know, the remedy. If staff says everything is there, and we look at the merits of it, and it rings true, I'm more than happy. I'm not opposed to supporting any project, no matter how it's submitted, whether it's under the remedy or not. That, that's not the issue to me. The issue to me is complete. The issue to me is completeness, it was there twice. It could have been discussed later on down the road whether or not you had to comply and build this road. So I'm separating the two issues and for that reason, I will support the motion to deny the appeal. And unless there's any other commissioner who has...
And pardon me, through the Chair, I did find, well, actually Ms. McCall found it, Attachment K, page nine through 11.
So it was bundled in?
It was bundled in.
Okay.
Thank you.
And through the Chair, it did come later in the evening or afternoon yesterday.
Yeah, we did get comments all the way up until a few hours ago, which I did read. So I've been paying attention, so I know. But I can honestly say I did miss that in perusing through all these pages. And I apologize for that, but the volume was significant and so I will own that, but it doesn't change my position unfortunately, with all due respect to that department. Again, are there any more comments, questions, clarifications from commissioners on the motion on the floor? If not, I will ask for roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hedderly.
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen.
Yes.
Commissioner Belska.
No.
Commissioner O'Donohue.
No.
Commissioner Levy.
Hi.
Vice Chairperson Rouser.
No.
And Commissioner or Chairperson Escobar.
Yes.
And the motion carries with four.
Just a matter, this is not an appealable item, so I didn't know if we wanted, do you want to state anything about that?
Okay. With that, we are moving forward to item number seven, receive report from, please refrain. Thank you, we have additional business today. Thank you, I appreciate the waving. Item number seven, receive report from the Department of Planning and Development relating to the draft program Environmental Impact Report for Proposed Rural Zoning Amendments and Agricultural Impact Threshold, ID number 125901. Would staff like to present the report?
Through the Chair, Lisa McCall, Deputy Director. I'm just getting, through the Chair, ask maybe just for a moment.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we'll pause while everybody exits, so the next item gets its time. And if there are any individuals who wish to speak on item number seven, now is the time. Fill out your card and place it at the front, please. And if you are online, please raise your hand so the clerk can see you. Thank you.
Just want to make sure, is staff ready? Okay. Oh, we're taking a minute, okay.
Okay. Is staff ready or do you, you still have a few minutes? Okay.
Thank you again, Lisa McCall, Deputy Director. We have the long-awaited rural zoning amendments coming before the Planning Commission. However, I just want to clarify that this is an overview of the project description. And today, we're hearing an overview of the draft EIR that was published and we're currently in the middle of the 45-day public comment period. So today, we are simply going to deliver that overview of the project description of the draft EIR and provide an opportunity to receive public comments from the public through this forum and the Planning Commission as well. We're not deliberating on the merits of the project and the, I just want to note, staff will go over this. The zoning ordinance is forthcoming and we'll go through various public outreach meetings to discuss further the zoning ordinance amendments with the public. And then it will come before the Planning Commission, again, with those zoning ordinance amendments before the Board for Approval by the end of the year. I will hand it over. We have with us Charu Alwalia doing our presentation, Senior Planner. And I'd like to also introduce Michael Meehan, Principal Planner, Mary Hannah Weir from County Council. And we have Brian, I am missing your last name at the moment, it starts with a G, but Gradich, who's our consultant for the EIR. Thank you so much.
Good evening again. This is Charu Alwalia, Senior Planner. And as Deputy Director Ms. McCall introduced, I'll be giving a brief presentation. And this is specific to the EIR's project description, we'll be doing a brief overview. So the project is the Rural Zoning Amendments and the Ag Mitigation Threshold. So just starting high level, the overview on the origins of the project in terms of what is being proposed and why. The department has, for several years now, been working on updating the rural zoning code. Broadly speaking, we're trying to facilitate the development of new agricultural uses and clarify where non-agricultural projects can be built in the rural areas and at what scale. So this is to benefit applicants as well as the surrounding community by setting clear expectations for development in the rural areas. So another aspect that's being addressed that has emerged over the course of this project is the SEQA case law regarding impacts to farmland. So a series of court cases, most clearly in March of last year, have established new precedent regarding farmland. But simply, the conversion of farmland must now be addressed. To give an example, historically, someone could purchase, you know, a 10-acre farmland parcel, build an estate home, and the project would be exempt from SEQA, so the conversion of farmland would go unaddressed. Now, based on recent SEQA court cases, the county is required to pursue an environmental assessment in the form of an EIR with mitigation measures to address impacts for non-agricultural development on farmland. So thus, with that overview, moving to where we are in the process. The project is currently in the SEQA phase. The draft program EIR was published in July 1st, 2025, and we're in the midst of the 45-day review and comment period that ends on September 4th, 2025. And as shared earlier, and like to reiterate, today's meeting is to highlight the key aspects of the project description and receive comments related to the draft program EIR. So overall, this project is quite large and complex. That's why we have broken it up into two phases and four interrelated objectives in the first phase. So Phase One is the Rural Zoning Amendments, which will streamline ag uses and increase clarity for rural applicants. Phase One will also establish standards for addressing the conversion of farmland. This will help projects assess ag impacts until such time when we, until such time the county has a full ag mitigation program, which will, you know, which is proposed as a Phase Two of the project. To set the geographic context for this project, the amendments are applicable to the four rural zoning districts. This is Exclusive Agriculture Zone in the lighter green, in the darker green on the screen, the Agricultural Ranchlands in the brown color, the hillsides in the lighter green, and the Rural Residential Zoning District in the yellow. In Phase One, Objective One is to replace local serving provisions with objective development standards. So the purpose of local serving provisions, which are a part of our general plan and zoning ordinance, is to make the size, scale, and intensity of development compatible with the rural setting. However, the subjectivity related to these provisions has led to varying interpretations and criticism that the county has not been applying them equitably. To address this issue, an objective development standard is being proposed, which would preserve rural character, make permit process more predictable for the public and easier for staff to administer while ensuring ongoing compliance with the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act or RLOPA. So just to note, RLOPA is a federal law concerned with ensuring that religious institutions and other similar uses are held to the same clear and consistent regulations. Objective Two of the project is to simplify and standardize ag supportive uses. The proposed amendments would update how ag activities are classified and permitted. So notably, wineries' use classification would be reclassified. So currently, wineries contain several ag-related activities. For instance, a project could be producing grapes, could have a tasting room, onsite wine sales, ag processing, tours, events. Staff is proposing to parse out these as independent uses. Specifically, pulling out the sales and events component as a standalone use would extend activities that currently are permitted as ancillary to wineries to other types of agricultural operations as well. Additionally, allowing events and gatherings ancillary to typical practice of worship will collectively allow for the RLOPA compliance. So overall, this update would simplify the permit process related to ag uses, expand economic activities, expand economic opportunities to better reflect how diverse ag businesses operate today and further ensure ongoing compliance with RLOPA. Objective Three of the project is to limit uses in the Exclusive Ag Zoning District to those that support the long-term viability of agriculture. So currently, there are several entirely non-agricultural uses that are permitted in the Exclusive Ag District. With the amendment, only ag and ancillary uses that clearly enhance the long-term viability of local agriculture and agricultural lands will be permitted, and this is in compliance. This is to bring the ordinance in compliance to the general plan policies. So with this objective, the aim is to ensure that ag remains viable while providing clarity to the public on what uses can be established in the agricultural areas and where. So lastly, Objective Four of Phase One is to adopt standards for ag mitigation. So as I stated earlier, there's a recent SEQA case law, which brings renewed focus on the fact that conversion of farmland to non-ag uses must be addressed. Currently, the county does not have a formal methodology to determine if a development project would need to offset impact to farmland conversion. So with the EIR of the Rural Zoning Amendment, staff is proposing adoption of ag mitigation standards, which would provide property owners' certainty regarding whether or not the project triggers the mitigation. So going back to the example shared earlier, when a property owner comes to the county to build projects on a farmland, with Phase One based on the ag mitigation standards, staff will be able to clearly tell them that they exceed this set threshold or are below the set threshold and whether or not they would need to offset the impacts to the farmland from their development project. In Phase Two of the project, when the county establishes the full ag mitigation program, the means by which property owners can address those impacts will also be clarified. For example, the parameters of conducting the preservation in Luffy, all those aspects will come as Phase Two of the project when we have the full mitigation program. Now, in the next few slides, we'll discuss how Objective 1, 2, 3 will be implemented in the county zoning ordinance. So related to Objective One, to ensure size, scale, and intensity of non-ag uses compatible with the rural settings, staff is proposing to replace the subjective process with an objective development standards. This is by introducing a cumulative building site coverage per parcel standard. This standard would apply to all non-agricultural uses in all of the rural zoning districts. And the range staff is proposing, and which is analyzed in the EIR, is between 7,500 square feet to 12,500 square feet of cumulative building site coverage. Related to Objective Two, to simplify and standardize ag supportive uses, use classifications in Chapter 21040 of the zoning ordinance will be reorganized. So currently, the existing ordinance describes multiple ag-related uses, each with separate and overlapping definitions and varying ways of obtaining permits, which can range from ministerial to use permits based in the rural zoning districts. So the proposed amendments would simplify the ag use classifications to ag processing and ag sales and events and standardize and simplify the permit requirements. As for streamlining, ag sales and events and ag processing projects below a certain threshold would be permitted through a non-discretionary ministerial administrative process, and this would apply to all four rural zones. The proposed threshold for ministerial approval being proposed is between 1,200 to 5,000 square feet for ag sales and events and between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet for ag processing. Then further, related to Objective Three, the zoning ordinance would limit uses allowed in the Exclusive Ag zoning to those that clearly enhance the long-term viability of local agriculture and agricultural lands. These uses that are also listed on the slide were provided in the draft programmatic EIR, and they make, they're introduced in Section Two, which is the project description. So I'd like to reiterate here that the geographic extent of the Exclusive Ag Zoning District, where the non-ag uses will not be permitted or are proposed not to be permitted any longer, are only limited in the green areas. So that's the Exclusive Ag District. But in the other areas, which is hillsides, ranchlands, and rural residential areas, these uses will continue to be permitted. So lastly, related to Objective Four, a threshold of significance for project-specific ag impacts is being proposed. So if the cumulative area of a parcel affected by the project consists of five or more acres of land delineated as one or more of the five farmland categories on the 2022 California Department of Conservation's Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program or the FMMP mapping series is identified, then a project will be subject to the mitigation requirements. So I'll repeat that. So we're introducing the threshold, proposing a threshold of five or more acres of important farmland as mapped on the FMMP series, which is the California Department of Conservation's Mapping and Monitoring Program. So it's important to note here that under SEQA, there are three farmland review categories, including prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, and unique farmland. But to explain why in the county's effort, we're also introducing farmland of local importance and farmland of local potential, I'll hand it over to Principal Planner Michael Meehan to give us a little more detail on that.
Thank you, Charu, Michael Meehan, Principal Planner. So the purpose of this aside really is just to emphasize the importance of including all five of these farmland categories that are tracked by, as Charu said, the State Department of Conservation through their Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program, which we refer to as FMMP. So the difference between many of these categories of farmland is simply whether or not the land is actively being farmed or even specifically if it's actively being irrigated. And so a concerning trend that's been observed around the state is that a property with prime farmland becomes fallowed for several years in advance of development and drops from the prime status to another category, often the grazing land category, despite never being grazed, and is subsequently analyzed under SEQA without acknowledgement that if it were only irrigated for farming again, it could be some of the best farmland in the state. So over the years, we've seen this play out in the county with projects that we've seen as well as working several years ago now with the state to establish the farmland of local potential category. And many years prior to that, working with the state to establish a farmland of local importance category, which are different in certain qualities, but both consist of ideal farming attributes and capture land that would otherwise fall out of FMMP's three primary farmland categories. Both of these local categories were both, were approved by our Board of Supervisors and are now being tracked and mapped on a regular basis by the State Department of Conservation. By including these two local categories, the proposed threshold of significance would effectively close this loophole and ensure appropriate analysis under SEQA. So with that, I'll hand it back to Charu.
Thanks, Michael. So continuing, under Objective Four, as for standards for ag mitigation, the county is proposing that for each acre of farmland to be converted as a result of a development project, an affirmative agricultural conservation easement, or what we call is an affirmative ACE, or an equivalent form of farmland preservation be secured. And this is proposed to be... And this is proposed to be implemented within the same subarea as the project site and at a one-to-one ratio. So in summary, the proposed amendments, as were highlighted in this presentation, would bring clarity and equity to the rural permitting process. They are proposed to protect the rural character of Santa Clara County by ensuring agriculture can thrive alongside well-scaled development and ensure mitigation for conversion of farmland resulting from development of non-ag uses. As for the draft program EIR, while the project provides many benefits to farmland and the ag sector in the unincorporated county, and although the economic analysis conducted for modestly streamlining uses show no pent-up demand or expected surge in development, however, under SEQA, any conversion of farmland is significant and unavoidable. So as such, the draft program EIR analysis has identified impact to agricultural resources as a significant and unavoidable impact. As for next steps, the 45-day review period and comment period for the draft EIR is ongoing and ends on September 4th, 2025. The draft zoning ordinance will thereafter be released in early September 2025, followed by the zoning ordinance outreach in September and October of 2025. Thereafter, the project will be presented to ALUC, to SIMPAC, to Planning Commission, and finally to the board in December of 2025. So with that, I would conclude my presentation, and our team is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's just clarify, couple clarification questions. I'm just confused as to how you can do an EIR on zoning amendments that don't exist yet. How does, how exactly does that work?
Yes, so through the chair, the full scope of the ordinance amendments are in the project description. All we, what we don't have in front of the commission today is the redline version of the zoning ordinance, but the scope of improvements and the analysis has been presented in the draft EIR. And I would request if anybody else wants to chime in. Go ahead.
So, so chapter two, project description, is the full extent of the proposed changes?
That is, that is correct, yes. So, you know, the, yes, we have that.
Through the chair, just an additional point of clarification, the EIR is looking at ranges, and so dependent on where ultimately the board lands with, so we're preparing an ordinance, and it will, the proposed objective standards will be somewhere within those ranges that you see within the draft EIR. And where we would ask that the planning commission recommend, and also that the board look to those objective standards staying within those ranges that are analyzed. So we didn't want to prepare an EIR that is specific to one set of, for example, square footage, because then we would come back and we would have to do amendments and go through processes more. So we've expanded and created parameters by which the commission can recommend or the various bodies can recommend, and the board can ultimately decide, hopefully within those ranges.
So you generally define a project, you do an EIR on it, and then you take that and actually do the redline changes? Is that?
Correct. So as long, right, as, what we've analyzed in the EIR, what the county has analyzed in the EIR, is if you stay within these parameters of the EIR, these would be the impacts or not. And so if we go beyond those, then it's a different, you have to look at the analysis again.
Okay, yeah, thank you. No, that, that makes sense. I was, it was just a little confusing that, the order of.
Right, no, I think it's a great clarification through the chair, especially, you know, for the public to understand the purpose that the EIR is serving.
Okay. And then another, sorry, clarification, can you go back a couple of slides to the one that has the square footage limits? So back, back, oh, are we going back? Okay, I don't know what direction, the one that's the seven, 7,000 to 12,000? Nope, this one, yes. So, so can you elaborate on this a little bit more? Is this basically, so this is, this is, this is where, this is the range that you were talking about, right? So in the actual zoning ordinance, it will be one number somewhere in between these two, and that number will be a upper bound on the largest building that we will allow built? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Through the chair, I'm not sure if it's the largest building built, but maybe staff can clarify.
Well, the, the largest cumulative building site coverage.
Yes.
Not.
Through the chair, I'll just ask staff to go ahead.
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, so that will cap, so, so for example, let's say we, let's say the number ends up being 12,000, I could do a 24,000 square foot, two-story building, as long as that foot, it's the footprint, it's not the square footage.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And then last question, so, so let's say I own some prime farmland, and I want to build a single-family home on it. How will these changes impact that?
Yes, so through the chair, for single-family residential development, if you're subject to a discretionary approval, which in, you know, in some cases can be a building site approval, it can be a design review, through that process, you would be subject to mitigation if you are going over the threshold that is being adopted through these amendments, or proposed to be adopted through these amendments, which is the five acres or more of important soils, prime, prime statewide, and we talked about this five, five soil types, right? So you would be subject to the mitigation of coming out of the development on the farmland through the conversion of use. You would also be subject to the 10,000 square feet cumulative building site coverage.
We have not, through the chair, we, it's within the range of, so right now, the zoning ordinance has not been presented, but within the range that's being analyzed through here. So the, a single-family residence and other structures that are subject to cumulative building site approval would have to meet the, whatever maximum is that the planning commission recommends or that the board ultimately approves within this range. Outside of that, agricultural structures also are accommodated, but I'm going to ask staff to lean in on those additional structures that go beyond and outside of this footprint. And I would ask either Charu, or Brian, or Michael, or Mary to respond to that.
Yeah, so did, did you have any follow-up?
I, no, I just, I just wanted to, so, so if I'm understanding you correctly, if I want to build a single-family home, let's, whatever that, somewhere, and it's somewhere in this range, let's say it's the 12,000 or 10,000, whatever, that obviously isn't more than five acres, because it's only 10,000 square feet, and therefore, it's not, it, it doesn't get impacted by that five-acre threshold. Am I interpreting that correctly?
So with the mitigation required, is the conversion of use?
But I'm only converting 10,000, 10,000 square feet.
Through the chair, if I may, Mary Hannah Weir, Lead Deputy County Counsel. I think it understood the, these pieces are a little bit tricky to understand, but, so there will be in the zoning ordinance, some of these pieces, for example, what we're talking about here with cumulative building site coverage, that would apply to a variety of uses, whether or not they require discretionary permit reviews, they would be, this is the rule. The ag mitigation threshold that Charu spoke to is only relevant if you are going through a discretionary permit approval, because it's only relevant through the SEQA analysis. So not all single-family home residences require a discretionary approval, but if they do, for example, some require a building site approval, some require a design review, that discretionary process necessarily also includes SEQA review, and that for that purpose, we're establish, we would be establishing this mitigation threshold, and it is to, and I think Charu can explain a little bit more about what it means to get to that five-acre threshold. It's not just about the cumulative building site coverage, it's about the entire change of use for the property.
Okay. I, I am still a little confused, but I will let my fellow commissioners.
I believe Vice Chair Rousier was next, and then we'll go to Commissioner Levy, and then Commissioner Henley. Oh, I'm sorry, was it, it's you? You're, I'm sorry, your light is confusing, I don't know which one it belongs. Okay, good to know, okay. So, in that order, please.
Thank you for the presentation. When I first looked at the goals, I, I just, I thought it was a winner. We, we've been looking for development standards, that local serving has been haunting us for years and years and years now. And so I, I just thank you guys for, even though it's been a long process, thank you for the efforts in trying to move this down. Having said that, if I owned exclusive agriculture, I would feel this is a taking, because there's so many things that in my property I can currently do now, it sounds like a lot of those options are going to be taken away. And so I'm concerned about that. When, when I look at this particular slide that you have here, implementation, let's just say the number is 7,500, cumulative building site coverage for new non-ag uses in all rural zones, so that means rural residential, so in San Martin, I can't build a house and have a horse barn that goes over 7,500, is that what we're saying there?
Through the chair, I'll just ask that staff clarify the five acres versus other uses that are ag-related on a property through the analysis of the EIR, that there's.
Michael Meehan, Principal Planner, you're requesting that we clarify the, the five-acre threshold?
An ag use. What, where, where does an ag use go in the, is it part of the cumulative building site approval?
I see, so i- if there's an ag use, then there wouldn't, on the property, then there wouldn't be a conversion of, of the use from an agricultural use to a non-agricultural use. The threshold is not relevant in that case. And with regard to what we're looking at on the slide here in terms of the cumulative building site coverage, what's proposed currently is that we would explicitly exclude agricultural buildings from that, that, that's, that square footage that you're seeing there. So wherever, wherever that, that standard is set, it would not be applicable, for example, to an ag processing facility, or a barn, or some other structure that's, that's supportive of ag processing.
I understand that completely. What, what I'm asking is, if they were to pick a lower number, I, I thought we were talking about exclusive agriculture, but this here basically says, no, we're going to apply this cumulative building site coverage to any and all zones, so that's hillside, that, that's all of them. And so now I'm asking, in rural residential, if I wanted to build a six-car garage, or do a horse facility, or have some farm animals that aren't necessarily, they're more for my fun, pleasure, rather than for an actual business, am I going to be limited to 7,500 square feet on my property now?
Through the chair, that's correct, yeah. And so this, I think that part of what's challenging for us, and will be challenging, I think for everyone to grapple with in this project, is that there's a lot of different components that are all being addressed through this, this large package of proposals. So in that particular case, the introduction of a cumulative building site coverage is not specifically about agricultural mitigation. Although we're excluding ag structures in order to accommodate those uses in the rural areas, the primary purpose of introducing this maximum is, is to replace local serving, as well as to introduce generally objective standards that ensure that rural development is of a size, scale, and intensity that's appropriate in the rural areas.
Okay, I, that, it, it seems very subtle that that was worked in here, I don't, I don't think you were trying to be sneaky, but that, that is going to impact basically everybody in the rural, in those rural zones. So, in essence, right now, we have in the exclusive agriculture, we have a 10,000 square foot limit. Is that correct?
Through, through the chair, that, that would only be applicable in, in Coyote Valley.
No, I'm saying, what exists today is a, is a rule that says, non-ag structures, you're limited to 10,000 square feet in exclusively agriculture.
Today, there's no, there's no limit whatsoever.
There is.
Are you, through the chair, are you referring through local serving?
No.
Okay, that, we don't have cumulative building site approval or those types of limitations in.
In exclusive ag, you cannot, in, in, if you're zoned agriculture, you cannot build more than 10,000 square feet if it's not ag-related, and that's been there since, I think, 2000.
Through the chair, that's, 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 that's not correct. There's, there's currently no limit outside of Coyote Valley, which, which limits, which has introduced some limitations, but Coyote Valley and that overlay zone, which was introduced just a few years ago, is the only area where there's any limit whatsoever on development, which is, which is unusual, I'll say, for jurisdiction, and is part of why we're proposing an objective standard, because currently, the only limitations on the scale of development is through subjective processes. And so it's not clear to applicants, or the public, neighbors, or staff, what those maximums are.
Okay, you're wrong on this, there is a limit. I used to work for a church, and they were zoned agriculture on Monterey Road, they used to be the Silver Saddle, and they were not allowed to have more than 10,000 square feet, and that's been since the 2000s. They went to Lafco twice to try and get annexed because they were limited by that amount. So currently in ag, there, there is a rule that says 10,000 square feet, you're limited to 10,000 of non-ag structures. We went through that when we approved the, the Hindu, I forget the name of it, but they, they had a barn that was ag, sort of ag-related, so that didn't count towards the square footage, the 10,000, actually, I think they were rural residential, so it didn't apply there, but they still didn't count the ag. So anyway.
Yeah, through the chair, that, that limitation would exist in the supplemental use regulations for uses that are not directly related to the long-term viability of ag, which is coming with these amendments as a proposal to remove them, but that 10,000 limit was only for non-ag-related uses, like you mentioned about religious institutions or other such uses. And there was also the supplemental use regulation of not, of permitting these in ag medium scale. So that may be what you're referring to, but, yeah, we're aware of that requirement, but we, with these amendments, will not be allowing for uses in the exclusive ag zoning district that don't support, support the long-term viability of ag.
So.
Right, so that, yeah, so that becomes redundant.
Okay, so if, if, right now, a current ag zoned property has a 10,000 square foot restriction, and this thing gets put, set at 7,500, would they, I assume they'd be grandfathered in, but if they wanted to expand in any way, that wouldn't happen, or how would there be a transition through that? So it's just, I don't need an answer now, but that's just something to think about, that right now, they're at 10,000, and this, you know, this goes as low as 7,500, that could, that could cause a lot of anguish to those property owners. And then I wanted to just go on the notice, since this really will affect the value of everybody's property, no matter what the zoning, I, I wish there was a way that the notice could go out to any and all parcel owners that are affected, not just a couple of announcements in the paper saying, you know, this is, because right now, we're getting into the details of this, but it was very hard through this. into the details of this, but it was very hard through this document, and you did a great job explaining it here, but it's very hard to understand what actually is happening through, through this process. And I understand the need to go through the EIR first, but it, it's, it was, it was kind of frustrating trying to go through this, go, what, what actually is happening? Because it just, it wasn't explained, the actual impact. Just like you were explaining now, it would have been nice to kind of give some scenarios and say, if you are a farmer and you have 80 acres, this is how it's going to affect you. If, if you're a rural resident and you got one acre or you got five acres, something, how is this going to affect me? To have to go through this with people who are not, they don't even understand the lingo, this is daunting. And so I just want to kind of throw that out there. Another question I have is, is limiting nonprofits and houses of worship in exclusive ag. I know Ralupa will allow you, you don't have to have houses of worship in every zoning. If it's like heavy industrial or something like that, they can exclude it. But I'd just like to ask, how the Justice Department criticized the county for some of the handling of what could have been violations of Ralupa? So I just wanted to say, what, what were they concerned about? And how is, is getting rid of houses of worship in agriculture the only way to satisfy their, their issue? Or is that something that we're going above and beyond? And the nonprofit, I asked for an explanation of what that is, if you could just read that in the public record, because there's a lot of nonprofits. When I first read it, I just think, just, if you're just structured as a nonprofit, does that mean you can't own ag? Or if you're a nonprofit that does ag-related stuff, you're allowed to do it? You know, what, what is the exclusion of nonprofit within the, the ag area? And also, what of all the list, the list of items that are no longer going to be allowed if this, under your recommendation, how many of those currently exist? So how many nonprofits are out there? How many golf courses? How many, you know, some of them will never have, and so those are easy to exclude and it simplifies things a lot. But some of them, they are viable, they may or may not be actually using prime farmland or taking up prime farmland. And so what is the impact going to be on, just going through all the uses? That would be helpful information to know before we say, you can't do this anymore to, to find out, well, there's 15 of them out there and they're thriving. You know, it could be boarding dogs or whatever kind of stuff. So that's more information that I'd like to see. Some of it suggested the building limit shouldn't be a hard number. It should be based on the size of the, the lot. I think we should, we should explore that. If you have 100 acres, that's a whole lot different than one acre or five acres. Also, there, there was a question on, not in the presentation, but in the thing on nurseries. It looked like nurseries were our number one money producer in this county by a huge margin. And yet there, there, there were some issues regarding, I don't know, compliance with nurseries. And so I'm just trying to find out, why are we trying to limit nurseries? Or what are the issues of compliance with, with nurseries that are trying to be addressed through this? And someone wrote to me saying that Supervisor Semidian, the Board of Supervisors set aside 60 acres, I think, for nurseries and said, if you need more, then come back and to the Board of Supervisors. But that's, that's kind of not even mentioned in here. And I think that, that should be as kind of a relief valve if needed for, for nurseries, because there's, there's a lot of nurseries and they're our biggest money producer. So with that, I will stop for now and appreciate all of you having to hear that ramble. And I appreciate you here to give your opinions, because I value them.
Through the chair, staff's taking notes on these. And when we come back with the ordinance, we'll make sure that the staff report includes information around some of the points that the commission as a whole desires for us to look into, and we'll, we'll take your comments into consideration.
All right. Yeah, thank you. And I just want to make sure that we keep moving because we have a lot of people in the audience that would like to speak to us. So I'm just going to ask about, so what do we, what is the scope of what we're doing here? I know Commissioner Rousa had a lot of specific issues associated with the zoning ordinance itself, but is that the kind of thing we're supposed to get into now? Or is that really the stuff for the next meeting, where we're actually going to look at the zoning ordinance? And right now, we're talking about the EIR and what's the scope of the EIR? And what's on the screen now is a great example, where the EIR says, here's the range, 7,500 to 1,250. So should we say, okay, well, we think that range, based on Commissioner Rousa, that this should be 20,000? And maybe that's what should be in the EIR? And we'll come to the individual, the specific number when we have that discussion in a couple of months, we actually look at the zoning proposal. So, you know, sort of what is the scope of what we're doing? And I have the same question concerning the thresholds for significance. We have some, the threshold of significance is identified as five acres here. Well, when we get down to, then get the zoning ordinance, we go, wow, we really, we really value our, our prime land. I don't think, I think five acres is too large. And so at this point in time, we're not discussing whether it's five acres or one acre. We're discussing, well, the, the, the EIR would cover both those. And so, you know, what are we supposed to be addressing as far as, I mean, we're really supposed to be focused on the EIR and not the zoning ordinance? And I know this, I am very happy to see this ordinance. We've had issues with our Ralupa projects and we really need clear definition in there. We have a 28,000 square foot house on a hillside that was ridiculous. It would have been great to have some standards here that we could have put some controls on that. So, yeah, I'm really happy to see this going forward, but I just need to have a clarification as to really, what are we looking at here? We really need to focus on the EIR and, you know, and what the bounds of the ER should, EIR should say.
I believe through the chair, is that a question?
That's the question. It's really, what's the scope? I mean, I, I hear and appreciate everything the Commissioner Rousa was saying, but is it really that a lot of that is for the next, he's providing direction for next time around? But a lot of those are really discussion for the next time around, aren't they?
Sure. We're, we're happy to take any comments, but tonight, we are specifically looking at receiving the report and receiving public comments on the EIR that was published. Certainly, if, if commissioners desire to suggest that a comment be submitted that considers, you know, larger acreage, that is, that is allowed to be submitted as a public comment for us to consider and respond to in the final EIR. But right now, the EIR that was published is the EIR for the project, and we're receiving public comments on that specific EIR.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I have, yeah, Bob, you got me wondering if I'm off on the wrong track here. I do have several questions. Maybe the, I'll start with the five acre threshold. That, so stop me if I'm getting in the weeds prematurely, but I'm curious how you settled on that number. It seems like a pretty high number, so I'd love to know the rationale and if you thought about, if you considered smaller numbers for analysis in the EIR? I'm worried in particular about how that five acre threshold plays, is going to play out across the different farmland categories in terms of mitigation. I want to make sure that, I want to understand who, who's going to go unmitigated? Do we have communities that are made up of a lot of smaller parcels that then would not benefit from the mitigations in, in the case of a conversion? So that's my first question, and I'll give you a chance to answer that.
And through the chair, again, we're receiving public comments. So what, what we would do is we would receive that comment and we would respond in the final EIR. And I would, I would ask that if staff's unclear of what the question or, or request is, then, you know, we can certainly ask the commission for further clarification, but we're receiving the information today.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go on then, unless staff had any questions about that. Okay. The other thing I'm interested in is the local serving piece, piece of the story. I, I'm newish on the commission, so I haven't been here for a lot of pain around how to interpret that, that provision. But cumulative building site coverage seems like a pretty narrow strategy to replace a goal, to, to serve a goal of preserving rural character. In particular, I wonder if you considered other strategies and also how that local serving piece of it, so, so this would replace local serving as the measure? And then how does that inter, interact with other general plan policies like RLU 18 and RLU 25? One of the institutional uses we considered in a hillside zone recently was, there was some, it was the view of staff that because, because that use was local serving, it did not have to comply with RLU 25, which requires that those institutional uses by their nature have to require a rural remote setting and support, or support the recreational or productive use study or appreciation of the natural environment. So I would like to see the ordinance clarify how these new, how, how it impacts those other non-local serving general plan policies. And that's, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
It's okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. I just have some comments or questions more about the future outreach for the stakeholders who have communicated with, with all of us. And I want to specifically thank the Hindu American Foundation and the Wineries of Santa Clara Valley. I thought that your correspondence was very helpful to understand some of the impacts on different stakeholders that, that I think need to very clearly understand some of the scenarios that one of my colleagues was speaking about. So I would just like to make sure that whatever that period of time is in the staff report from September or October, that, that there's a robust outreach process that reaches all the different stakeholders, not only the folks that have communicated with us, but some who might not know that this discussion is taking place. And if there's any other feedback that we receive from that process, that, that be presented to us when we hear this again in a way that allows us to better clearly understand the impact of the recommendations. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donoghue.
Yeah, I just, I want to build on Commissioner Cohen's statement. And I think, I think we did outreach, it was almost around COVID time, right? When this first started coming out, we started talking about it. So I don't, if, if that's the case, you know, I'm sure properties have changed hands and, yeah, I, I would, I would recommend we do a lot more outreach with property owners.
Commissioner Baska.
Yeah, thank you. So since, since you are accepting comments and feedback, I, I would like to make a request. So you have, you, you have a provision here for streamlining processing for smaller-scale religious institutions. I would really love to see a streamlined process for smaller-scale, single-family home residential applications. I think part of what is happening in our rural lands is that families who own these lands will try to build a home for months, for years, and eventually give up, and they'll sell their property to a developer with deep pockets, who will then come along and propose, you know, a mega mansion or a mega church or a subdivision. If we made it easier for these families to build a, let's call it appropriately-sized home on these, on these parcels, you would actually end up preserving open space, because once the parcel is developed, it's no longer as appealing to be sold, you know, for, for larger-scale development. So I would really love to see the county make it easier to build, you know, let's call them, you know, tier one or whatever, whatever you want to classify as a smaller-scale residential development. That would also help our housing shortage and would in fact preserve open space. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Okay. Seeing none, public comment?
We currently have 56 requests to speak in chambers and on Zoom. It appears that we have, oh, the number's rising, just give it one moment. And just a note for the public, the public comment queue will close for in-person and Zoom speakers when the first speaker begins speaking. Looks like we're holding at five on Zoom. Up, one more. All right, we're holding at six. And we'll do one minute?
Okay. Each speaker will be given one minute, and it is a hard one minute. The mic will go silent on you. So please make sure that you make your point at the very beginning of your comment, otherwise it'll get missed. Also, if you've changed your mind and no longer wish to speak, that's okay. When she calls your name, just don't line up and we'll give you, give them a minute and move on to the next one. You also don't need to restate anything that is in the agenda and the agenda report, if that saves you time in getting out your thoughts, to make sure that we hear them. And so with that, let's move forward, please.
Of course, we'll call the first five speakers, Kim Engelhardt, Sharon Luna, Stacy Giovanni, Philip Block, and Rocky Garcia. If you can make your way to the podium, any order. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Engelhardt. I'm the president of the Wineries of Santa Clara Valley, representing over 30 wineries in the region. Our wineries are integral to the local economy, attracting over 500,000 visitors annually, generating millions in tourism and agricultural revenue, and employing nearly 600 residents. We're concerned about the lack of transparency of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments and how they may impact our winery businesses. What thresholds are being set for grape farming, for winery production? We need clarity on whether existing wineries will be grandfathered in under current zoning or if we should be planning for high-cost remediations to comply with new regulations. If we're required to pay tens of thousands of dollars in new permits, there are many wineries that would be forced to close. We urge the commission to consider the economic impacts of our small businesses, to provide more clarity before any final decisions are made, before any final decisions are made. We ask for a collaborative approach, ones that, one that supports both the preservation of agricultural heritage and continued success of our wineries. We look forward to working together. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is very difficult because we've been dealing with this local serving issue for a long time. My name is Sharon Luna with the San Martin Neighborhood Association. Every time I have come to the Planning Commission, I have heard commissioners ask about what is the local serving. Finally, we're getting some clarity in regard to it, but it has taken a lot of work, and we're looking for that transparency. That word transparency is becoming meaninglessly. It's the trust issue, the trust that we have, the faith that we're going to get this local serving handled. And that there's just too many things that are not described, defined for our agritourism, everything. So I'm hoping that there will be more dialogue with the public, with San Martin. So I'm hoping that there will be more dialogue with the public, with San Martin residents, in order to come to conclusion on this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Genini. I'm the executive director for the Wineries of Santa Clara Valley, the association. On behalf of the family-owned wineries, we appreciate the opportunity to comment on the proposed rezoning and its potential impacts. Our wineries contribute to the region's economy, preserve agricultural, and enhance local tourism. As you review these changes, please consider these questions. Will existing operated wineries be exempt from new rules or retrofits by being grandfathered? Will wineries with onsite grape-growing, wine production, and sales be recognized as fulfilling agricultural tourism goals? Will valid ABC licenses and approved tationaries maintain zoning compliance? How will expansion be defined for longstanding wineries that have organically grown? Will previously approved outdoor tasting spaces require new permits? Will small wineries under 10,000 face new event restrictions affecting their economic viability? Has the county assessed the economic consequences of new rules on small family wineries? Thank you.
My name is Philip Block. My comment concerns the adequacy of the project description in the PEIR. It does not include, as you know, the actual text of the proposed rural zoning amendments. And those amendments, as you know, will not be released until early September at the earliest, according to the staff report. Yet the public comment period is set to end at September 4th. Without seeing the amendments, the public cannot fully evaluate the scope of the project, and therefore, it makes it difficult to understand the meaning of the EIR as it applies to actual changes. This is especially true to the changes to the local serving uses. The PEIR is unclear whether the new standards apply only to local serving uses, or to all non-agricultural uses in rural areas. You can see language in the PR, in the project description, that cuts both ways. For meaningful review, I would urge the commission to ask staff to extend the comment period until at least 30 days.
Thank you. And I'll call the next five speakers, Larry Imas, Kishore Nanyala, Vijay Dutt, Vicky Carmoyen, and Paul Carmoyen. Go ahead.
We're home builders and developers in the Santa Clara Valley. And the one, the main point that I would like to make tonight is the word rural. I don't think rural should ever be, that property should ever be attached to a city boundary, an urban service boundary. It's very important. We have two pieces of property. One is a 200-acre piece of property that Mr. Rousher probably didn't know he was speaking about when he talked about golf courses. We are 100% surrounded by the city of Santa Z, but it is in the county. If we want to expand, we have a very small clubhouse, we probably should expand that. But it would expand much more than 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. It's 200 acres. The second piece of property we happen to have is down in Morgan Hill, and it is adjoining about 75% of city boundary. We've tried to annex to the city, we've not been able to. But it is definitely not rural. Thank you.
I'd like to highlight the basic flaw in the staff's approach for this, as highlighted by Commissioner Heterly. The staff wanted to reduce the ambiguity in the local serving ordinance, that's based on the RLU 57, but that is applicable only for the rural residential. So trying to extrapolate that and stepping on its toes on the hillside zoning, where RLU 18 clearly says there is scope for institutional use, where they need natural setting and the rural setting for that kind of space. So in trying to solve this local serving ambiguity, they're violating the general plan for the county. And as well as, they're also violating the loophole for discrimination disproportionately, there's another aspect of disproportionate discrimination. So they'll be violating these two fronts, and I'd like to request them to reconsider this on more fair grounds. Thank you.
Can I remind those in the audience to silence your electronic devices? There's alarms going off. So we want to be able to hear everybody clearly. Go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question about the slideshow? There's a map that we have seen. Is there a way to get that?
You can speak offline with staff. I can't.
So the presentation is available online through the meeting portal.
Oh, okay, very good.
Hi, my name is Larry Imas, and my wife and I own Ellen M. Vineyard down in Gilroy. We do about 500 cases of wine annually, and we deal with primarily grapes from Santa Clara Valley AVA. And reading through the document, thank you, Mr. Rousher, it's very confusing. One of the weird things that I kept on seeing was that there are notations in there that the county has repeatedly encountered facilities operating through the existing wine classifications with only tenuous connections, if any, to the production of wine and/or cultivation of wine grapes. We're kind of concerned that we're a small winery, we follow the rules. If there's a problem or issue, I'm not sure why this is being addressed in this report. It should be dealt with through the codes and not affect the rest of us. Thank you.
And just a note prior to speaking, if you could state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Carmoyen, and I am one of the owners of P&amp;V Winery in Coyote Valley. I've been a resident of Morgan Hill for over 60 years. We opened up June 2nd of 2019. I come from a family of small business owners. My parents had two small businesses in Morgan Hill, as well as my aunt and uncle. The small businesses are the backbone of our community, and they're also the heart of our community. Wineries are not just a place where wine is served, we're a place where people gather with their families to celebrate birthdays and have picnics and enjoy the agriculture of our Santa Clara County. We are a place where memories are created, but we're also a place of remembering of the memories of agriculture in the past, when it was very common to see small farms everywhere, and also to see fruit stands. We're asking you to please do this case by case, if there's issues with different locations where there's a problem, but please don't take our small winery farm rights away. Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commission. I'm the other owner of P&amp;V Winery. My name is Paul Carmoyen. You have a letter that I submitted dated August 25th. I kind of want to just comment more on the sequo. And I agree, you know, it's written in such a way that is very concept-driven. There's, it's like a broad brush, if you will. And having it more specific, understanding, having a strikeout version, these are the codes that exist to Commissioner Rousher's, you know, confusion of what's existing, this is what's proposed. You know, the art of code writing is very intricate, conjunctions like and/or have completely different meanings. So understanding what the EIR says, these are the impacts, this is the code, understanding the project, because right now, it's in concept. Imagine that last project you reviewed. Let's say my project was 100 acres, I'm going to build 1,000 units. There's my project. Not enough.
Vijay Dutt, thank you so much for the opportunity to share our thoughts, and real appreciation for the Planning Department for all their help as we're going through multi-year process. So my request is that, when we're looking at this farmland classification, we're adding two classifications that are really not listed by the state, the local importance and local potential. And these are, you know, hillside and these designations, which are not really viable farmland. And also, what is being proposed here, some of the things that are allowed by right, are actually going to go back to a clearing, something that requires a planning clearance. For example, we want to be in a rural setting, we are proposing a 1,200 square feet axels and a 2,000 square feet processing, but now that requires planning approval instead of being allowed by right. So please help us, you know, address these things.
Our next speakers are Sal Aker, Glenn Roberts, apologies, these have no names on them, Bala, Prasant, Gopal, and Praveer Panera.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sal Aker. I actually had prepared, I'm a resident of the South County, I live in the county, and I had a set of comments prepared, but I think Commissioner Rousher channeled a lot of my thoughts very eloquently, so I'm going to keep it brief. All I'm going to say is please do not replace one problem with another problem. And be, please be very mindful of the property owner's rights and their economic interests. This is a sweeping, it may have sweeping impacts on people that have vested their life savings in properties that may see it go down the tubes. So this conversation requires, or this whole proposal requires a lot more public input and conversations at the local level where people live, even with the farmers, to understand what lands are farmable and why they don't farm in the Santa Clara County anymore. There's economic reasons for that, not just because there are not enough land for that. So please be mindful of that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and commission rather. Glenn Roberts, 5300 Hecker Pass Road, Gilroy, South County resident, here to speak in favor of those comments that have already been made about identifying specifically the scoping and impacts on wineries. I think that's really critical. We live right in the middle of that area. It's a tremendous boom. I think it's a mistake to subsume all that under the agriculture category. Please at least break it out as a specific identifiable subcategory with identified requirements and impacts. You know, that's become a lifeblood of the South County in many ways, and I really would like to see that given individual attention. You know, calling it agriculture is fine, but people don't go to Napa for agriculture, they go there for a winery, right? So please find a way to address those issues, particularly economic impacts on the small wineries. I know many of these people, as just said, have put their life's work into that, and you need to tell them how it's going to be affected.
My name is Balakrishna Gangseti. I'm a resident of Santa Clara County for 15 years, and I'm a volunteer with a local nonprofit. I see firsthand how local nonprofit organizations feed families, support youth, and care for seniors. The current proposals blanket cap unintentionally blocks some of these lifelines, so I request kindly to consider these recommendations. As Commissioner Rousher suggested, kindly replace the one-size-fits-all cap with parcel size-based allowance, so that larger parcels can accommodate more modest buildings without compromising on the, preserving the open land. And second recommendation is limit these regulations to agriculture zones, and not apply to the hillside rural residential zones if possible. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Praveer Panera. We need our communities to thrive, and for that, we need places where people can come together, share with each other, help each other, and help those who are less fortunate. And with these amendments, the community centers will be limited to serve their communities better. For example, we may not be able to build the kitchens to feed the hungry, we may not be able to build the senior centers where our seniors can hang out, or we may not be able to build the places where faithful can come and find comfort in prayer, prayers and worship. So I would request, number one, limit these amendments to strictly the agriculture zones. Secondly, exclude residences from it, because we already have a residential crisis in the valley. And thirdly, as everybody has said, limit these, consider the size of the parcel when applying these limits. And then I think we will, we all will be able to serve our communities a lot better. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. The proposed rural zoning amendment would unintentionally restrict essential services, like my colleagues, as said, right, food relief, youth programs, senior support, prayers, centers and all. I urge to adopt a balanced approach based on the parcel size, the cap should be based on the parcel size, exclude residential floor area and apply limits only to the agriculture zones, not the hillside or residential rural. This way, we protect agriculture while keeping vital services available to our community. This helps a lot of, I mean, there are a lot of organizations which do good for the community. This will impact them in doing so. Thank you.
And just to confirm, your name for the record?
Gopal.
Gopal, thank you so much. Prasant, are you in the audience still? Okay, and I'll call our next couple of speakers, Partha Sarathi, Venite, Panad, Pashtibaru, and Radha.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Prashant Chenagiri, volunteering for a local nonprofit, which will be impacted by the proposed zoning changes. These zoning changes, as proposed, would make it very hard for rural campuses, especially churches and nonprofits that feed families, mentor teens, and bring neighbors together. If too restrictive, they would unintentionally cut off the various services our communities depend on. We are asking for a fair adjustment. Let parcel size guide what's allowed instead of a blanket cap. Don't count housing or caretaker quarters, and focus the rules only on true agricultural zones. This protects farmland while still giving local families and community groups the space to serve and grow. Thank you very much.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Partha Sarathi. The proposed rural zoning amendments will freeze the growth of social enterprises by limiting the use of non-agricultural land. I think this may be in violation of RLU IPA ordinance. More than any violation, what I'm more worried about is the impact this will have on the youth. You know the present condition of the youth in this country, the violence, the mental illness. The social enterprises are the one that act as a buffer to protect this youth and make sure their mental growth is satisfied. So let's not compromise the future of the youth. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Venite, resident of Santa Clara County with the last 10 years. Regarding the proposed agenda, I would like to urge respected commissioners to make amendments to the rural zoning proposal for the betterment of the residents of the county that we all share. The requested amendments are, like we have discussed before, please make, allow constructed footprint a percentage of the lot area, and not a fixed, you know, footprint. Exclude residential footprint from the cap, and exclude hillsides from these regulations. Please note that these, you know, large covered spaces in these areas are more than just buildings. These are places where communities come together, build social bonds, provide guidance to our youth, so that they are not misled and become responsible citizens of the societies they live in and serve. These places serve as community centers for health, clinics, spiritual guidance, yoga and meditation classes, town hall meetings. These communities can mobilize hundreds and thousands of volunteers for Santa Clara County in time of crisis and emergency. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. My name is Rekha Praduturi. I'm an executive director of a free hot meals feeding program through which we are serving thousands of students across the county. And we have a very bold goal of serving 1 million meals by 2030. These selfless efforts depend on modest facilities, and there should be better use of open land by nonprofits, so we can serve the people of our county in a much better way, and the students in need very effectively. While we fully support protecting agriculture and the rural character of our county, I request the commission to adopt a balanced approach, allowing community-serving programs like ours to continue helping those in need, especially students of our county. like ours to continue helping those in need, especially students of our county. Thank you so much.
And I'll call a few more speakers, Prasuna Kumar, Sanatana Naga and Chris Anderson. Please go ahead.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Parthiban, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this rural zoning amendments. This amendment would freeze the growth of many community campuses by tightly capping the non-agricultural footprint, even where the current zoning ambitions reasonable expansions. Religious nonprofits are major share of the spending applications and these facilities deliver public benefits countywide. These amendments will disproportionately affect the religious institutions. This violates the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act of 2000 ordinance. We are asking for a targeted data-driven adjustments, swap the one-size-fits-all with parcel-size-based percentage, percentage majority of land in agriculture or open space, still leave them, exclude the residential floor area. Thank you.
Good evening, this is Kumar here, I'm a Santa Clara County resident and a volunteer with a local nonprofit. The proposed general zoning amendments would cap non-agricultural building and site coverage in a way that unintentionally limits essential community services, food relief, youth programs, cultural education, senior support and spaces for prayer and reflection. Hundreds of residents have petitioned you for a balanced approach. Please direct staff to, one, replace the blanket cap with a parcel-size-based allowance so large parcels can modestly build while keeping most land open. Two, exclude residential floor area from any non-ag cap. Three, apply these limits to agricultural zones, not hillside or rural residential, to protect agriculture and preserve services. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Sanatandas and I'm a local resident who help run rural programs, feeding families, mentoring teens and supporting seniors. So to expand these programs, it depends on a little flexibility in land use. So right now, the cap on non-agriculture coverage makes it nearly impossible to add even a small kitchen, a classroom, even while most acreage stays in open space. So we absolutely support protecting agriculture and rural character, at the same time, I suggest a balanced path. Here is my proposal, let the footprint be based on parcel size, don't count housing or caretaker quarters against the cap, against the cap, and apply the limits only to agriculture zones. This way we protect farmland while letting rural communities continue to serve their neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Prasuna and I'm the resident of Santa Clara County and an active volunteer for many years. I respectfully ask you to consider the real world consequences of these amendments on farmlands and rural communities where even modest nonprofit and religious campuses may be restricted despite serving thousands countrywide. The proposed blanket cap could disproportionately limit these services and risk conflicting with the religious land use and institutionalized persons act protections. A practical solution exists allowing building size based on parcel size excluding residential floor area and applying these rules only to agriculture and agriculture ranch land zones. This approach protects farmlands while allowing nonprofits and religious programs to continue uninterfered. Thank you.
And I'll call our next few speakers, Rajini Vatari, Vishwa, Madan, Deepa and Roja. Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening Commissioners, everyone. I am a volunteer for local youth programs, cultural education, senior services and spaces for prayers are due to consider a more balanced approach. One is base allowances on parcel size, not a blanket cap, exclude residential floor area from cap, apply limits only to true agriculture zones AR, not HS or ARR. Thank you.
Hi, respected Chair and members of the board, good evening and thank you for the opportunity. I'm Rajini Vatari, a Santa Clara County resident for more than 15 years and I help with local programs that support families, youth and seniors. We share the goal of protecting agriculture in open space, but under the rural zoning amendments, the limit on non-agricultural building are so tight and even modest improvements like a small kitchen, a classroom or a prayer space would not be possible. That's why I, along with many residents, respectfully ask you to consider three practical changes, as everyone suggested, that a size-based allowance so larger parcels can add modest buildings, do not include residential floor space in the cap and apply these rules only to true agricultural lands, not hillside or rural residential areas. Are these adjustments still protect farmland and rural character while keeping essential community services available to all residents? Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Madan. The proposed zoning changes place a blanket cap on hillside parcels, this should block even small practical additions while most land remains open. Hillside zoning should be excluded because its purpose is to manage slope, safety and open space, not to regulate agriculture. Most hillside parcels are already limited by terrain and environmental rules, so an extra blanket cap is unnecessary. Building size should match parcel size since larger parcels can safely hold larger buildings without harming rural character. Residential area should be excluded because they are already developed and don't affect farmland. Limit should apply only to agricultural and ranchland zones where farmland protection matters most. This approach protects farmland while keeping hillside joining fair and workable. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for hearing me, my name is Deepa, I'm a Santa Clara resident since 2010. The rural zoning amendments would unintentionally freeze growth on community campuses. The blanket cap on non-ag uses doesn't fit the reality on the ground. Parcells are different sizes and serve different needs. A lot of pending applications are from the faith-based nonprofits that run schools, meal programs and counseling, real public benefits across the county. The way this is structured would hit those institutions the hardest and frankly raises serious concerns. We are not asking to open the floodgates, we are requesting for a practical data-driven fix. Swap the one-size-fits-all cap for a parcel-size-based percentage so most land still stays in agriculture or open space, don't count residential floor area toward the non-ag cap, housing is a county priority and part of how these campuses function. If you can direct staff to bring back language with these changes. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, myself Roja. I'm local resident helping to run programs in rural areas where we feed families, mentor teens and support seniors. We need more flexibility. With the current blanket limit on non-agriculture use, we can't even add a small kitchen or a classroom, even though most of our land would stay open. We fully support agriculturing and then, you know, farming, but here is a more practical approach, allow a reasonable size-based limit for larger properties. Second one, don't count housing or caretaker quarters towards that limit. And the third one, apply these rules only to true agricultural zones, not to hillside or small rural residential lots. Yeah, thank you.
And before we get to our next speaker, I'll call up the next few names, Harishan, Sanirvas, Madhary, Sudhir, Subash and Sarar.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Vishwa. As a resident and a volunteer, my service is simple, feeding families, mentoring teens and welcoming seniors. These modest programs depend on small improvements, but the blanket cap would block them outright. I urge you to refine the policy, tie allowances to parcel size, exclude homes and caretakers and focus only on A and AR agricultural zones. This protects farmland without cutting off essential rural services. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Hari Krishnanam, I live in Santa Clara County since 2012. So we are my active volunteer in some of the nonprofits. I strongly urge you to carefully evaluate how the proposed rural zoning has been made. Amendments will affect our agriculture needs because these rules not only impact farming but also essential community services, that food relief, youth programs, senior taking care. So my recommendation is to, like our colleague said, please do not do the blanket amendments on, of all the sizes, please go by the cap size. That's, that's my recommendation, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Shrinivas, good evening, hi Commissioners. I went through all the proposals, the presentations, they are definitely good, you have a good cause for that, however, you know, we need to also look at what are the facts, right? So there are so many owners with, with different, you know, whether agriculture or non-agriculture or hillside, you know, or rural areas, they, we need to actually, you know, get all the statistics from all the people, contacting them, get that information and see how they are being impacted at, based on these proposals. And some of the things from the proposal, however, there is a lot of ambiguity, lot of questions and there is no clarity based on how much acreage, how much is the limitation. So this is more like, this looks to me like if, on a first glance, that it's, it's a cap for everyone. So I, I can, I request the Board of Supervisors to please consider each, each one case by case and take a decision. Thank you.
My name is Subash, thank you for the opportunity. We live in the land of innovation and we are fortunate to be in Silicon Valley, so we're, we're riding innovation wave right now, AI wave. And we are making these kinds of proposals with not having a pure data-driven mandate is, is very unfortunate. That's point one. Point two is, I have two kids, one five-year-old, one seven-month-old, they spend both Saturday and Sunday in a community space. Having that restricted would actually severely impact their growth over their lifetime and I cannot see that happening. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. So my name is Sudhir and I've been a resident of the Santa Clara County for over 15 years now and, and an active volunteer at a nonprofit over here. And, you know, the moment we came to know about this zoning amendments, you know, it was shocking, the way it's been being proposed, you know, one cap for all rural zones seems too extreme. I mean, there is agriculture, you know, zones, there is the hillside, you know, there's the rural residential, there are so many zones and one-size-fits-all, you know, just doesn't seem to make any sense. It's just not practical, it's going to affect hundreds, thousands of owners in this area and, you know, as other colleagues were saying, it'll impact a lot of nonprofits, you know, who would go in a remote setting and they would like to create some spaces for youth, you know, for, you know, different kinds of community programs. So I'd like to sincerely request you all to please revisit and don't come up with one-size-that-fits-all.
And I'll call our next speakers, Ryan Maneshki, Julie Morris, Vishnu, Rena and Praveena.
Good evening everyone, this is Sridhar, I'm the developer. Developing single-family homes in the county and great questions from a lot of the planning Commissioners, things like, you know, how could there be an EAR when there is no zoning standards exist today? Things like, you know, if I own a farmland, you know, how could you take the rights away from the owners restricting to some irrational numbers that have no basis, like, you know, one acre, five acre, 7500 square feet, like what's the basis for those? I disagree with, you know, the proposal and there is a process that's already working. You know, every land development goes through PRP design reviews and then case by case, you know, they get approved. I would recommend keep the process that's working and introducing this change negatively impact the communities, as you could hear, a lot of the nonprofit organizations getting impacted, you know, taking their ability and who is supporting the community, promoting the... Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aihon Menekshay. For, to me, it looks like horse is behind the cart here because we don't know what the proposed amendments are. We are trying to talk about the environmental impact without knowing what actual amendments will be, but in abundance of caution, I would like to make a couple of comments. I live in a private residential community in San Martin, we have our own private roads and private water company and we are controlled by CCNRs. Our CCNRs allow certain usage agriculture, residential and ranching, which doesn't allow commercial. And we are very much concerned with some of the amendments may impact our CCNRs which they should be controlling. And the second part I want to comment is, we have, we are dealing with a situation where someone is trying to build a tasting room and activities, we want to make sure agriculture is separated from other activities. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioner, my name is Vishnu. Recently I was going through a survey that one in every six students in Santa Clara County doesn't have enough food to eat. So I'm a volunteer who does cooking and provide nutritious meals to the underprivileged children in the Santa Clara County. So please, with this restriction what you are imposing, the nonprofits cannot grow and they cannot expand, please remove the restrictions so that they, they can build the property based on the acreage they have. Thank you, Balakrishna.
Hello, this is Praveena Gaddam, thank you so much for the opportunity, really appreciate it that you have given and I've been hearing everybody talking about it, so I can see that there are so many people impacted and I'm also one of them. So I've been teaching to the youth for last 20 years in a nonprofit organization and at Sunday schools, especially in a faith-based organization. So we have close to 200 kids that come, but we are like short of classrooms, so we are planning to expand those classrooms so that we can accommodate more youth and mentor them. But with the current, with the current proposal that we are hearing, so it's going to impact and it's, it's going to disturb a lot of them and there is a lot of hope that the community has that we give the right education. So this, this kind of things might impact them, so request you to please take consideration. Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Julie Morris, I'm the agricultural liaison for Santa Clara County. I work directly with farmers and ranchers to help them thrive in the county and specifically I work with a lot of young and beginning farmers who could go anywhere when they decide to become farmers, but they chose Santa Clara County because of our soils, our water, our infrastructure and now we just need the policies to support these young farmers. Without seeing the amendments, I hope that they will reduce permit barriers for small-scale agriculture, allow all farms to diversify income streams, provide clear objective standards instead of vague requirements and protect farmland from non-agricultural development. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rena. As a owner of the Santa Clara, I mean, as a property at Santa Clara County, I see this is taking away some of the owners' rights and like what I'm hearing is like if you own a property at hillside, you can't do any expansions, especially I'm concerned with the floor area, residential floor area, so please consider that and yeah, that's my only request, thank you. And you know how expensive to buy the property here in Santa Clara, so making these restrictions is really concerning, so please do consider the rights of property owners around the neighborhood. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Ram, Jirga, Sal Karin, Anil, Niranjah, Niranjah Kumar, see two comments, and KM Supraja. comments, and KM Supraja.
Hi, I'm Supraja, thank you Commissioner for giving me opportunity. So, here is the problem, like so many people are getting impacted. So, wineries or seniors or kids and some social services and community services, everyone is getting impacted. And the solution is very simple, not the blanket cap. So, it should be like based on the size of the property. And this will give the right justice to agriculture and the community services. Everyone will be balanced and everyone will be happy. And we request you to consider this, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ram and I actually really appreciate the comments from Commissioner Rauzer. And really, I think you made my day today. I'm part of an organization that is providing thousands of meals to youth and we want to expand it to actually maybe hundreds of thousands very soon. We also do a lot of community education for youth and for people of different ages. And there are so many other activities that we are doing and service to the community. And I think these amendments that I heard today will have significant impact on our entire community here in the county. So, please take into consideration, I think we are talking about how we can eliminate hillside and rural residential from this proposal. And also look at the parcel size and see, you know, how, what accommodation can be made for that, thank you.
Thank you for your times and my name is Niranjan Kumar. I've been in Santa Clara County for two and a half decades. But, 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 but the main thing that I would like to speak is that for the last ten years, I've done extensive research on beyond lifestyle. All the technical advancements that we've had helps with the lifestyle but not the life. And I think when we talk about some of these kind of developments, which is different from the farm and others, we improve the lifestyle. And when they talk about the teaching area, they're really talking about the next generation, how to tap into the inner strength. So, I would be very, very brief on that and speaking, because that's a very vast subject. But in order to have a prosperous citizen around here, we need both the wealth and the mental health. If the mental health is lacking, we will not have prosperous citizenship around here, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Narendra, I'm a local resident. So, the current rural zoning amendments will stop the growth of many community campuses. They do this by setting a strict limit on non-agricultural buildings even in areas where current zoning allows for reasonable growth. Religious nonprofit groups make up a large part of the waiting, waiting applications. These groups provide benefits for the whole county. These changes will affect religious institutions more than others. Breaking the rules set by the Ralupa ordinance, we are asking for a fair solution based on real data. So, number one, replace the strict limit with a flexible percentage based on the size of each parcel. Number two, do not count housing in the non-ag limit, making sure we have enough homes. Thank you.
Good evening everyone, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Sai Kiran Sindula, I'm a Santa Clara County resident for many years, around fifteen years. I volunteer with local nonprofit programs, including faith-based organizations. As Commissioner Rauzer already expressed similar thoughts and I also wanted to echo with many others that the proposed rural zoning amendments make it very hard for faith-based nonprofits to expand, even small additions like classrooms, kitchens or gathering spaces for prayers would be restricted, very restrictive it will be. These impacts many religious facilities which deliver important community services county-wide and may conflict with protections under Ralupia, the Religious Land Use and Institutionized Persons, Persons Act. So, finally, my thoughts are without parcel size-based flexibility, even large properties cannot modestly expand while keeping most of the land open, limiting the programs through organizations provide the community.
And I'll call our next speakers, Adeswara Rao, Supriya Shijish, Prasnath and a final call for Chris Anderson. Thank you, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Anil and thank you for giving the opportunity to speak here. My main concern is that, you know, the limit on the square footage would not allow religious organizations which I volunteer and my kids go to, you know, to learn the culture. One of our, you know, congregation person also mentioned that, you know, our children spend most of their time, you know, Saturday, Sunday there, learning the values and things like that. And this would limit these organization to expand. And obviously, we're growing community and then that's a serious concern for us. And I know we would like to request you to rethink about it and then, you know, again, most of us mentioned that, you know, one-size-fits-all does not really apply here and we request you to consider that. Thank you for giving the opportunity.
Thank you, good evening Commissioners, my name is Adeswara Yasoda. My concern is that the rural zoning amendments unintentionally penalize the faith-based and nonprofit campuses. These institutions represent a large share of applications and they provide essential services across the county. The blanket cap is too blunt and may conflict with Ralupia. Please adopt a more precise approach, parcel size-based allowances. Exclusion of residential floor space and limits applied only to true agriculture zones. This balances farmland protection with religious and community services, thank you.
Good evening everyone, I'm Supriya. I want to start by saying that much of what I planned to say was already well-expressed by Commissioner Rauzer. I'm from Santa Clara County, as many of the speakers already said, the proposed amendments would cripple essential nonprofit services that rural residents truly depend on. These caps would block nonprofits and faith groups from expanding vital programs, leaving many without lifelines and weakening our community's support network. Protecting farmland is crucial, we understand that, but these blanket caps on non-agriculture buildings are too harsh and threaten the survival of our communities. We ask for a thoughtful solution, not a one-size-fits-for-all kind of approach. Please understand that farming isn't the only way to keep rural life alive, our people and communities matter too, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Shijish. I've been living in the Santa Clara County for the last ten, more than ten years and actively volunteering lot of community services, nonprofit organizations. So, my, I'm, would also urge the same way, it severely crippled the ability for the nonprofit organizations to grow up because they need lot of space for kitchen or for food banks and all those things. So, I would urge to make this based on the parcel size, allowance based on the parcel size, not a one-size-fits-all. And also only apply this to the agricultural zones so that the others are being accepted, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Prashant and I have been a resident of Santa Clara County for many years now. For the past twelve years, I, along with my team, have devoted every Sunday to serving our community, nurturing our youth, guiding children toward brighter futures and caring for our seniors. This one-size-fits-all zoning cap in the proposed rural amendments is not just misguided but it's also harmful. If passed as written, it will block critical programs, food relief, youth mentoring, senior services, cultural education and spaces for prayer and reflection. These are lifelines for our community and we cannot allow them to be stifled. I urge you to exclude residential floor area from development cases, allow parcel size-based building allowances and limit these rules only to lands genuinely zoned for agriculture. These common steps for protect farmland, maintain rural character and ensure faith-based community can continue and serve selflessly. Our community cares deeply and with your support, we can keep these essential services thriving for everyone, thank you.
Thank you, and just a note to the public, I do have a few speaker cards with no names on them, so if your name wasn't called, please provide your name on a new card, thank you. Okay, moving on to our Zoom speakers.
It looks like we do have some...
We do have someone, okay, wasn't sure. And then just please state your name for the record.
Good evening Commissioners, this is Pratik here. Today, when I walked into this room, I was full of anguish. And when I heard Commissioner Rauzer, I felt happy, you sensed my pulse. We feel that the rules which are coming, they're going to restrict us in many ways. And I think you gave the solution itself, that how, by taking a percentage of the parcel for, and, and that kind of limit is better than have a single fit, with, with, single-size fitting all. So, I think that's a solution and also removing the housing, which my other friends also told, housing or the hillside areas from, from the statute help us, thank you.
Thank you, now moving to our Zoom speakers. Oh, apologies, one more, thank you.
Hi, thank you, my name is Channaridi. Looking at this, the amendment, I don't think it is clear, I mean, there is a lot of ambiguity in it. And it does, having a cap, the cumulative building, right, the cumulative building area does not, is not a viable solution. And moreover, it discourages the, the, the farmers as well as the other community services within the area. So, I request you to consider it and take into the consideration the lot size or the, the area of the, the complete area. And I, I request the team to put their heart and soul and reach out to the nearby farmers and collect the feedback that they, from them and after that try to set it, thank you.
I do have one more card with no name on it, so must be yours, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Indira, I live here, I'm a volunteer with a nonprofit serving rural communities. The proposed blanket cap on non-agricultural coverage may protect the land, but it will limit the ability the nonprofits can serve the community when they are in need with food and with care services and all, because the need will always increase, so we need more place. So, it is not a limited thing, the service is not going to limit in a particular square feet or something like that, so please consider, thank you.
Okay, now we're moving to our Zoom speakers. We have Ally, Ally you will have one minute, you have been unmuted, please proceed.
Hi everyone, my name is Ally. My husband and I own a small farm and vineyard in Santa Clara County in the rural residential zoning. As a small farm, I would support rural zoning amendments that would support farms and include agritourism. Farm stays, tours, events and farm-to-table dinners are not just side businesses, they're how many, they are how many of our farms survive. Agritourism keeps land productive, educates the public and shares the beauty of our rural community. If farms cannot survive, the land does not stay farmland. And farmers must be a part of drafting these amendments, real farmers. The people actually working the land and raising crops need a seat at the table to make policies that reflects today's agriculture and keeps rural families rooted here, thank you.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Hassan. Cynthia, you've been unmuted, please proceed. Cynthia?
Hello, can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
Oh, good. Good evening Commissioners, my name is Cynthia Hassan, I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Santa Clara County and I've been an attorney for twenty-eight years. It is concerning to me that comments are due on the draft program EIR before the zoning ordinance will even be released. I'm speaking tonight to express concern with the vague zoning regulations proposed by this project, particularly as they affect the wineries in the county. Wineries have a longstanding history in this county and are a unique feature of our county. The draft program EIR is not clear on what will be accomplished by removing the winery classification from the zoning regulations. The wine industry is already facing challenges statewide. Why place additional restrictions on the wine industry in the county when it has contributed significantly to tax revenue as well as the tourism industry? Many wineries in our region are small family-owned businesses. These families have dedicated their lives to and invested their life savings in developing a business in the county. Please keep this in mind as you consider the proposal as it moves through the process, thank you.
Our next speaker is Panmimi. You've been unmuted, please proceed.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Good evening Commissioners and everyone, as a resident and volunteer, my service is simple, feeding families, mentoring teens and welcoming seniors. These modest programs depend on small improvements, but the blanket cap would block them outright. So, I request and, I request the officials to refine the policy, tie allowances to parcel size, exclude homes and caretakers and focus only on agricultural zones. This protects farmland without cutting off our essential rural services, thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Gandhar, Gandhar, you've been unmuted?
Hello, Madam Commissioner and other members, my name is Gandhar and I am Santa Clara County resident for past twelve years. The proposed rural zoning amendments while well-intentioned, place a blanket cap as everybody had said here, a blanket cap on non-agricultural usage. This unintentionally restricts vital services like food relief, youth programs, cultural centers, senior support and many others for the faith-based groups. Hundreds of residents have petitioned for balance. I respectfully urge to replace the one-size-fits-all criteria here, exclude the residential floor area from the cap and apply limits on agriculture and hillside zones as mentioned with the others as well. This approach will be good for farmland and for the other community. There was one statement about data and, and easy Google search replaces that faith-based people are very less mentally impacted and anxiety is less among those people.
Our next speaker is Varada, Varada you've been unmuted? Please proceed. Varada?
Sorry, I was muted, can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
Alright, sorry about that. Good evening everyone, I live here and work here. I also volunteer with a nonprofit serving rural communities. And like the previous speaker mentioned, the proposed blanket cap on the non-agricultural coverage may protect the land, but it also harms the service families that depend on food, education, senior care and prayer. So, a balanced solution is possible, which is basically set allowances by parcel size, remove residential floor area from, from the cap and also focus these rules on agricultural zones. And like everyone mentioned, this protects farming without undermining the essential community programs, thank you.
Our next speaker is Manju, Manju you've been unmuted, please proceed.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners, my name is Manju Kiran and I have had the privilege of residing in Santa Clara for many years. Over this time, I have been actively involved in communities, community services every Sunday. This has brought like immense joy and fulfillment for my life and I, and hope to countless others. But with the current proposed rural zoning amendments, it severely hampers the ability for these faith-based organizations to expand and enhance the community services which we have. So, you know, I see this, I, to help ensure these valuable contributions... So, you know, I see, I, to help ensure these valuable contributions, you know, are not unintentionally curtailed, I respectfully urge you to consider the following suggestions: exclude residential floor area from any cap or non-agricultural users.
And that concludes public comment.
Are there any questions, comments, discussion from Commissioners Vice Chair Rousier and Commissioner Cohen?
I just want to say thank you for everyone that stood up there and poured your heart out, because that, that really helps us, and I know it was hard this late in the day and everything, and I've learned a lot from you, and I just, I just appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. A couple of quick comments. It would be nice if, and I mentioned this by, by email, the, the map that has the different soils on it, if that could, it sounds like it's made accessible, but if there was a way, if people wanted to find out what the soil was in the area, if they're interested in a property or something, if there was like a little tutorial or something on the website in this area where they could get to that information kind of easily, that would be very helpful. You know, what, what is their zoning? What's their soil type? Are they exclusive ag? Are they this or that? For the record, I did want to clarify the 10,000 that I was referring to is in 4.10.290 Religious Institutions. The maximum gross floor area of covered spaces enclosed in unenclosed structures shall be limited to no more than 10,000 square feet. That's in agricultural medium-scale lands. And religious institutions are prohibited in agricultural large scale. Those are the current rules, and so my, my comments still stand that, does that go away? Or how, how does that get affected? Just as a general thing, it, I would definitely like to see the comment period extended. This is now I'm talking to my colleagues here. I so agree with the goals that you guys set forth. I, I think you nailed them, but I, I think this development, or what has come about, in my mind, is more of a punitive rather than a carrot. It's a stick more than a carrot. It's limiting what people can do. It's, it's making them have to pay if they expand and do uses, and not everyone is a dot-com millionaire in this area. And so nonprofits, they, they can't afford to expand, they have to pay all these impact fees or, or other fees. And I'm getting that from the wineries, too. They had, they wanted to build a, a place to host things, and then they have to pay this impact fee of $20,000 because they're covering some, some space. And so is there a way, this is my challenge, you guys are very bright, you've come up a lot of great ideas, is there a way to do this that promotes agriculture, but, and I know we have a lot of programs that do that, but is there a way to do this in a way that promotes agriculture, but it, it doesn't penalize the, the owners, even the farmers? A lot of them don't have 401Ks, they don't, you know, so when we go and buy their development rights and we give them some money, they can take that and use that as a retirement. So could we stick to maybe those kinds of solutions rather than really devaluing e- even the rural, the rural residential ones? To me, this, this is scary. So I'll just leave it at that, and I'd love to hear from my fellow Commissioners.
Thank you so much to all of the speakers. I just have a couple of comments for the staff, maybe for the, the report backer thinking about how we're going to manage this for the next few months. One, just is the outreach timeline that you laid out robust enough? Is it long enough to meet the needs of the, kind of the complicated issues that are in front of us? Two, I'd be curious to know the speaker who mentioned the impact on CCRs, if that, there's material impact there on, on residents who are bound by those contracts? And then third, I was just curious to know what the overlay or conversation is between the new Office of Economic Development or just the conversations around agricultural tourism, and making sure that that's a consideration for how we're also doing outreach, given that there's concurrent conversations about economic development in the county as well. So, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donohue followed by Commissioner Belska.
I think she was first.
I just have a clarifying question for the staff on the timeline, because I think there's some confusion about comment, comment periods. So the 45-day comment period for the draft EIR is closing, but presumably, once the actual zoning ordinance is published, the public would again have an opportunity to comment on that. Is that correct?
That's correct. Throughout the remainder of this process, the county will receive any public comments up until and even through to going to the board, through the entirety of that time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excuse me through the chair, just to clarify, for the zoning ordinance that would be forthcoming.
I, I just want to thank everybody who showed up today. It's, it's really nice to hear just the passion from different groups of people. And just so you know, you have Commissioners who could potentially be affected from these changes, so we, we feel you. We don't take these decisions lightly. Promoting property to enjoying the liquid that comes from grapes, we, we completely understand. I do have, I do have a lot of concerns, and I feel like this EIR is kind of uncoupled from the zoning amendment that's coming up. So, and I think maybe in an effort to be transparent, we've maybe caused more questions, so that's just a concern of mine. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, oh, sorry. Commissioner leaving.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I, I agree with, first of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out and expressing your perspective on where we need to go with this. It's going to be very challenging to balance individual property rights and with the long-term goal of protecting agricultural land 20, 50, 100 years out, if it gets developed. So it's, it's a very difficult balancing act and to develop something like this. So thank you all for coming out and, you know, stating your perspective, because all these are all now in the public record, and so they all are going to have to be considered by the planning department moving forward. I also agree with your, your perspective here in uncoupling the zoning from the EIR. It's much easier when, when they're together. One of the things that was brought up on a regular basis by the wineries is how does this impact existing wineries? And my understanding is that it theoretically won't if they don't want to expand. If they expand, yes, it could impact them significantly. But existing wineries are grandfathered in, isn't that correct? Any type of existing development will be grandfathered in.
Typically, that is how it occurs, and the county is proposing that for consideration.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not threatening any of our existing wineries, because I do enjoy going to them. I'll be going to one Saturday night. And one of my favorite bands is playing there. And that's not CZ Topin Mountain Winery. So, you know, and one of the concerns that was brought up on a regular basis was this one-size-fits-all, and I just want to make sure that we're doing our very best to promote, to protect the prime ag land and not, you know, overburdening, you know, lower-quality ag land with the same exact standards. It seems that we should have flexible enough standards that where the lower-quality ag lands, there's more flexibility. And, but whereas, you know, we have the prime agricultural land, I do want to see it be prime agricultural land 20, 50, 100 years out. I don't want to see it being nickled and dimed with developments that are not agricultural-based. One of the questions I had about the EIR itself is, you talked about, let's see what my notes are. It was, okay. Oh, it's when you were talking about alternative, the various alternatives, and we identified alternative C as being the, as being the primary alternative, but wouldn't it be a combination of C and D as the superior alternative?
Can you read those? Because we don't have them memorized.
But I don't think those two are mutually exclusive, so you have two different alternatives that actually address different things, and it's really the combination of those two alternatives. Sorry, I don't have my notes to say what those are. But it would be the combination is, that would be the environmentally superior alternative.
Through the chair, we can, we can look at that and respond in the final EIR and see if there's consideration for additional combos.
Okay. Okay. And I think that's all I have at this point in time. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. And with that, I will acknowledge receipt of the report. There is no vote on this item, and we will move forward to item number eight, elect officers for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. First up is A, 8A, elect chairperson. I am going to go ahead and nominate Commissioner Mark Rousier for chair.
Second.
Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do. Keep moving.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. Can you please call for the vote?
And just to confirm, there are no comments on this item.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutterly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Belska?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donohue?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Sure.
And future chairperson, Rousier.
If I have to, yes.
I guess I can let it go now. Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. 8B, elect vice chairperson. I'll venture out again, and I nominate Commissioner O'Donohue for vice chairperson.
Okay.
You accept? Okay.
I accept.
Is there?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
I thought we should go to one of our newer Commissioners, he was just the chair very recently, so my concerns and my comments.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. We, no, no public comment?
Correct. No request to speak.
Can you please call for roll call vote?
Commissioner Hutterly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Belska?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donohue?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Sure.
Vice chairperson, Rousier?
If I have to.
And chairperson, Escobar?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right. Congratulations. Other business, number nine, receive report from chairperson. As the outgoing chairperson, I do not have a report, but thank you for a lovely year, and I will gladly pass the gavel to chair, future incoming chair, Rousier. Number 10, receive reports from Commissioners. Any reports from Commissioners? Vice chair, soon-to-be chair, on-the-cusp chair, Rousier.
So this month, I went to the Gilroy Rodeo, which we approved. Good times for all. They were sold out every day. My hat's off to them. They do a great job. Thank you for approving that event.
Commissioner Levy, so sorry.
Yeah. What I want to do is, I'd like to recommend that we have a workshop for builder's remedies projects, because there's going to be lots of stuff coming our way. And I have, I have sort of a list of things that I would like to see covered. You know, first of all, the map of where they all are, because there's 30-some out of, out there, what the impacts are, you know, identifying the potential cumulative impacts of all these developments. What is the planning Commissioners' role, particularly in the reviewing of SEQA for each of one of these builder remedies projects? And whether we can recommend an aisle of projects based on them having significant negative impacts that aren't mitigatable. So what's our role there? Could we recommend to the Board of Supervisors, well, this is a, this has some serious negative impacts, maybe like this new project example has on a liquefaction zone, or, you know, whatever the potential impact is. What we saw tonight, they potentially mentioned, and I don't know if they're real, but they mentioned a number of potential ones. What's the role of availability of services? And then something that one of the Speakers tonight brought up, and that was, if a couple of years down the line, HCD says you're not making enough progress, Santa Clara County, can they reimpose the builder's remedy? And so there's, there's a whole slew of things that we, as planning Commissioners, need to understand when it comes to builder's remedies, because this, with 30 projects in the works, and potentially this issue coming up, SEQA issues coming up, et cetera, what's our role and what, what can we expect?
Through the chair, are you, are you asking me if I can commit to that? I can go and request and see through the Director and also through County Council, the level of, of outreach or workshop for the Commission versus perhaps having a, a different type of?
Yeah. Well, this one, I think, is very important.
It's on our work plan, so we've gotten approval for it, so he's, he's saying sooner rather than later.
List of things that I think we should be addressing, because I, this, we could be seeing a fair number of, of builder remedy projects coming forward.
Any other Commissioner reports? Okay. Number 11, receive report from County Council.
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Number 12, receive report from Planning Commission Secretary.
I don't have anything to report.
13, receive report from Deputy Director of Planning and Services, Department of Planning and Development.
I believe we may have reported this at our last planning commission, but we did hire a senior planner with an ag specialization. Her name is Erin Yata. She's joined, she's been around for about three weeks now, so we're onboarding her and bringing her into some of the rural zoning updates and amendments that we're doing as well, so she'll participate along the way. We are recruiting again for another senior planner position currently, and we're about to start interviewing for assistant planner positions, four of those.
Okay. 14, receive report from Director, Department of Planning and Development.
So Lisa Macyle, I can stand in for the Director on Chiano. There's nothing to report at this time, although we do keep moving towards our people-centered services platform.
Thank you. 15, announcements and correspondence. I'm acknowledging receipt of correspondence ID 125676. And with that, we are adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 25th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Board of Supervisors' chambers, 70 West Heading Street, San Jose.